It's four o'clock. I'll call this meeting to order. We're the Putnam County Planning Commission, and we will be hearing three cases today, and then we will be reviewing the data and analysis for the comprehensive plan that has been revised. Before we go forward, I'd like to ask Mr. Hafner to read our code of ethics.
As a member of the Putnam County Planning Commission, I pledge to come to meetings prepared for the items on the agenda, willing and ready to listen carefully and courteously to make informed decisions based on the facts presented in what I feel is the best, is in the best interest of the people and businesses of Putnam County. I will refrain from unnecessary interruptions, and I will be appreciative of and respectful towards applicants, members of staff, and other members of this commission. I will support the decisions made by the majority, and I will be fair and objective in all that I do as a member of the Putnam County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Jerry. This is a public hearing, and we are the Putnam County Planning Commission. We're the designated local planning agency for the county as described under Title 11, Chapter 163 of Florida statutes, and we function under the authority of Articles 11 and 12 of the Putnam County Land Development Code. The primary responsibility of the commission is to serve as an advisory body to hear and make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners on matters related to provisions of and proposed amendments to the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan and Putnam County Land Development Code. The members of the committee will review each application and make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners at a regularly scheduled meeting on June 22, 2021. Procedurally, we will call each case by name and number. A member of staff will then briefly explain to us the nature of each request. We will take comments from the applicant or their representative, followed by any public comments concerning the request. Please direct all comments or statements to the commission and not to other people in the audience. Before speaking, we will ask each person to be recognized, come forward, be recognized, state your name and your address, and then we'll let you tell us what you need to tell us. After all persons wishing to speak have been heard, we will entertain a motion from the commission. The motion will be voted on by this commission and will become our recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners will make final determination regarding the applications. We have three zoning cases, and Wendy Hickey will be presenting. So I'll turn it over to you, Wendy.
Okay. Good afternoon. This, this case is R-2110. This, the applicant is KBUSA. The agent is Ron Kent. Zoning, it's a zoning map amendment for two parcels from residential R2 to commercial retail C2. The properties are located on the east side of West Towles Avenue at the corner of State Road 19. The addresses are 510 and 514 West Towles. The parcels are designated urban service on the future land use map. The parcels are .92, total 9.92 acres in size, excuse me. There's approximately 194 feet of frontage on West Towles and 230, 200, 328 feet of frontage on State Road 19. I'm sorry, I'm getting like dyslexic here. I'm sorry. There are no known wetlands nor special flood hazard areas on the, on the parcels, and the parcels currently are vacant. This is an aerial map of the, of the parcels. This is the future land use. As you see, it's urban service. And this is the zoning map showing the R2 zoning. The urban service area category of the future land use map consists of areas where urban type infrastructure has been provided or will be provided in the next 10 years. Urban type infrastructure includes central water, sewer system, stormwater management, and major paved streets or highways. Neighborhood commercial development and community commercial development are permitted. The purpose of the residential R2 zoning district is to provide a residential zoning district that is inclusive of mobile homes for the use in the rural residential urban service and urban reserve future land use category classifications. The category, the use categories that are allowed within the R2 district are residential single-family, mobile home, community residential home having six or less residents. The purpose of the C2 zoning district is to provide a commercial zoning district for light commercial land use in the rural center, urban service, and again, in the urban reserve and commercial future land use classifications. The use is allowed in the C2 district are retail sales general, retail sales food, office, service, services, passenger vehicle service limited to tire, battery, and oil change, and of, and religious facilities. There's additional, but this is just a brief overview. The future land use designation is urban service, and the proposed C2 zoning is consistent with the future land use designation. The uses, the use associated with the requested C2 zoning districts, districts are allowed within the urban service land use category. West Towles Avenue is a paved two-lane local road. It abuts State Road, State Road 19, and that is a designated minor arterial with an adopted LOS level of service of D. The developer, development on this site will be served by the City of Palatka Utilities for Water and Sewer, and as in all of them, an annexation agreement will have to be, is required at time of connection. No known wetlands or flood hazard areas are on the parcels, and the surrounding land uses are a mixture of commercial and residential. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning to C2 is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map, consistent with the local requirements for the C2 zoning district, and compatible with the surrounding uses. Staff recommends approval for the request to amend the zoning map from residential to, R2, to commercial retail C2 for the subject parcels. If you have any questions?
Any questions of Wendy?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at the application that was submitted. It says C3, and you say C2. Is the proposed?
I, I can, I can share some information with you. What happened was when we started to do the review on the appropriate rezoning for the area, C2 would have been the, the best use within that area because of the surrounding parcels. They are all C2 and residential. That bump up, and in addition to being on the side street at this point, staff had recommended to go down, to do downs, not downzone, but to request the applicant, if a C2 would be, would be okay with them, and they had sent an email acknowledging that, that that would work for them.
I understand that, but the proposed use is what stated. Is the applicant here?
We'll get to that. We'll get to the applicant in a few minutes. We're talking with staff now.
All right. The proposed use says vehicle repair service.
And I think she went over that, that tires, battery, and oil change are allowed in C2.
That's correct. That's all. Not, not, I mean, I'm talking, a repair service is a lot more intense than changing a tire.
Well, Wendy, can you answer that?
But unfortunately, we do not, within our, our zoning area, the C3, we, we could not recommend approval on a C3. We could recommend approval for a C2 based on the surrounding zoning and, not necessarily land use, but generally the zoning.
It would have been a more intense zoning and?
Exactly. And so that was brought to their attention.
Right. Okay.
The, the use that they need to do what they want to do would be C3?
No, sir. That, we, we've spoken with the applicant, and it's our understanding that they intend on remaining within the parameters of what's allowed for the vehicle repair in C2.
His, according to his statement was that what he wanted was outside, was to put stuff outside, was more with, if he could do some more repair type things outside. And it was the outdoor that really he wanted, not necessarily the repair that he talked about. It was having outside use. And so I said, the C3 allows for outdoor storage, where the C2 doesn't allow for the type of that, down that road.
Right. And outdoor storage would be incompatible probably with that area?
As, at the zoning, it is today, yes.
Okay. All right.
When it goes into, you're, you're going into the city. They're going to go into the city immediately?
What happens is, as in some of, since I've been here, I can't really speak for other, but they do sign an annexation agreement, and they have an opportunity at that point that either they develop within our, within our planning area, or they actually annex in. It, it's.
It's common on the border.
It, it, it's up to the applicant. They can actually, they can either develop within out, with, within the county, or, and then annex, because that's when the water will be actually provided, or they can do it just before.
Yeah, I have, I have personally done that. I, I permitted under county with full knowledge of the city, though, of what we were doing, and they were going to accept as soon as we were finished and CEO'd.
That will be the responsibility of the applicant. But what we have to do right now to get this going is, if, if we're going to do anything, this has to be rezoned from residential to commercial, and.
And every development will come in for development review. So at that point, that, that's where you go into the nuts and bolts of whatever the project is.
DRC does those determinations, right. And that's done before it goes to BOCC, or that's done at the point when they're ready to, to put something there.
It's ready when, when you're going to put something there. He, for all intents, for all intents and purposes, he can actually just have the rezoning and nothing happen after that.
But it's more compatible with the surrounding area and with the?
Correct.
With what's in that particular area, especially along Highway 19.
At this, at this time, yes, it is.
Okay. All right. Any other questions of staff? Is the owner or the owner's agent here today? All right. So we can't ask the owner the question, but I think Wendy, you've given us a good explanation for that. I'll bring this back for public comments. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak either for or against this particular application? Okay, hearing none. We'll bring it back to the board. Closed public hearings portion of this section. Any discussion, or do we want to get it on the table for a vote?
I move to make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, Joel made the motion. Tom has seconded. Any further discussion?
I just want to confirm that they are aware that the limitations of C2.
Excuse me?
As far, they are aware of the limitations of C2 for, you have that in writing from them.
And also, they have received the packet. They've had all the documentation.
And this will come before the county commission again, too, on June 22, so there'll be another opportunity to make sure they know what's going on. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Okey dokey. Let's move on to item B, which is R-21-011. Wendy?
This applicant, this application is, the applicant's names are Herman and Martha Kersey. They're, they're requesting a map amendment for a single parcel from commercial C2, commercial retail C2, to commercial general C3. Last meeting, you may remember, we had the, the portlet to C3, which happens to be directly next door to this. So it's a continuation of a general area trend. The property is located at 102 West Miller Street. The parcel is designated commercial and urban service on the future land use map.
Excuse me, Wendy. Kristen, can you turn Wendy up a little bit? Okay, because we're not picking, it's not coming through these speakers up here. Just picking the microphone. Yeah.
Okay.
It's a soft voice.
Just, just, you know, just eat that microphone.
Okay. All right. So the parcel is .24 acres in size. It's approximately 108 feet frontage on West Miller Street. There are no identified wetlands or special flood areas on the property. The parcel, the parcel is currently developed with a 2,000 square foot commercial structure that was built in 1972. So there's a commercial building there. This is the aerial photo, and this is the future land use showing the two different land uses. And this is the current zoning district. This is a C2 currently. Before I, we, I get too far into this, I would like to also add that our next item is also a companion piece to this, so that when we're kind of going through this, you're going to see a lot of repetition and things like that. So I, I, I just wanted to let you get, make you aware of that. The commercial category in the future land use map consists of areas intended to serve as a primary commercial locations in the future. Urban service, of course, is a category of future land use that consists of areas where urban type infrastructure has been provided or will be provided in the next 10 years. The existing zoning is C2. It provides for the commercial zoning district for light commercial in, in the rules, the rural center, urban service, and urban reserve, and the commercial future land use classifications. The use categories allowed are retail sales, retail, general food, services, office, childcare, and adult daycare, nursing home. The purpose of the C3 district is to provide a general commercial zoning district for a mixture of light and medium intensity commercial uses that require immediate access to major minor arterial roads. The retail, this also has retail sales, general retail sales, food, services, office, recreation and entertainment, outdoor and indoor, and mini warehouse. The future land use designation of the commercial and urban service and the proposed C2 zoning, they're all consistent. The uses associated with the requested C2 zoning district are allowed in the commercial and urban service category. West Miller Street is a paved local road, and the property is only 117 feet to the intersection of US Highway 17, a designated principal arterial with an adopted LOS of D. The development on this site will be served by the existing well and septic that has been permitted by the Department of Health. The surrounding land uses are a mixture of commercial and residential. And as I had stated, this piece is, is in conjunction with our next case. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning to C3 is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map, consistent with the local requirements for the C3 zoning, compatible with the surrounding land uses. Staff recommends approval for the requested amend, amend, amendment to the zoning map from commercial retail to commercial general for the subject parcel.
Any questions of Wendy? Okay, hearing no questions for her. Is the applicant or the applicant's agent here? Would you like to come up and speak? Yes, ma'am. And please give us your name and your address.
My name is Martha Kears, and the parcel that is in question is at 102 West Miller Street in Palatka. Our home address is 111 East Palmetto Street, which is right down the street. And actually, we are right down the street from Ron's Quick Lube, like two houses down. The parcel that's in question, that C2, which Gotta Go just came in to go to C3 zoning, which there is also a house on the front, which is a commercial property that we own as well. We're purchasing that property from Donald Holmes, which we also purchased the building that is in question, like eight years ago, from Mr. Holmes. When the building first started out, which has been the same thing, when COVID happened, we just went in and put some paint on the walls, which my husband ran his bail bond business from there. He runs Kears Bail Bonds, which is off of 19. I own a childcare. In the area that she's talking about, there's Sunshine Trophy that sits right on the corner, 17 McKennons. It's only one house there. I grew there, grew up there as a little girl. The building that I have, it used to be a motorcycle shop. It's thumbed in. Someone lived in it. It's thumbed in a church. It's thumbed in several different things over the years. Hopefully, we can get it rezoned, and we keep the neighborhood up anyway. Some of the people are older in the neighborhood, so when things are going on, we make sure all the trash is gone. We did a whole 360 since we've been there. We keep it up. It's commercial property throughout the area. Like I say, the property that's next to us, we're in the process now. We're waiting for the tax deed to purchase that particular property to get that cleaned up. So basically, the whole block would be either with Sunshine Trophy on it or out on it, and there's only one house there, which anytime anything's going on, we go in the neighborhood and let them know what we're about to do, make sure everything's okay, make sure everything's ran smoothly. So that's the purpose of the rezoning.
Okay. Any questions of Ms. Kears? Thank you. We appreciate your coming forward. Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against this particular case? Okay, then we'll bring it back to the board for board action. Do we have discussion, or we want to get it on the agenda, or get it on the table for vote?
I move, we approve the rezoning from retail C2 to general C3.
Okay, Tom has made the motion, and Joel is seconding this time. Okay. Any further discussion on this particular parcel? Seeing none, all in favor of changing this from C2 to C3? Please designate by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. We have rezoned this one. Wendy, let's move on to R-21012.
As, as I had previously stated, this, this is a companion piece, and ju, and just as Ms. Kears had explained, it's currently, the current owner is Don Holmes, and the Kearses are the agents. The zoning, they, this happens to be two parcels. One is a very small parcel that contains a wall. I know. And then there's, then there's a house. So, so that's the two parcels. The property is located 100 West Miller Street. The parcel's a designated commercial on the future land use. Total's .25 between the two parcels in size. There's 117 feet of frontage on West Miller and 90 feet of frontage on US Highway 17. This particular property actually has the driveway on 17. So they, they don't face the side street. They face 17. There are no known identified wetlands and special flood areas on the property. The parcel is developed with a 3,000, 3,027 square foot. This is from the property appraiser as the square footage, residential structure that was built in 1957. And as you can see, it, it's just the abutting property, the future land use, zoning. The commercial category on the future land use consists of areas intended to serve as a primary commercial locations in the future. The C2 zoning district allows for retail sales, general food, services, office, childcare, nursing home. The C3 just as in our previous, allows for the retail sales of general, of food and sales and service, office, recreation, entertainment, mini warehouse. The future land use designation is commercial. The proposed C3 zoning is consistent with the future land use designation. The uses associated with the C3 zoning are allowed in the commercial use category. The frontage on West Miller and the, the frontage on 17, and then there's the development on this site will be served by the existing well and septic, because this too has an existing well and septic. And according to the utilities in the area, which again are City of Palatka, the water is across the street, across 17. That's as far as they go, and that's all they have across the street. Surrounding land uses are a mixture of commercial. And staff finds that the proposed rezoning to C3 is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map, consistent with the location requirements, compatible with the surrounding uses. Staff recommends approval for the request to amend the zoning map from commercial retail to commercial general for the subject parcels.
Thank you, Wendy. Any questions of Wendy? My only question is, this is future land use of, of commercial, and the parcel we just did is urban service. Is that just something that just never got caught in the, the overall walk of things?
I, I really can't say.
Okay.
The previous parcel was both commercial and urban service.
Yeah. Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, over here.
I know, I keep having to find you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Oftentimes, lines are just drawn, and sometimes they're not in line with the configuration of the parcel. So the previous one was split, but that would be one.
We've got a lot of that going on in Putnam County. We've worked, worked to take care of some of it this past couple months. Any other questions of staff? Okay. You've spoke once. Do you have anything you would like to add, Mrs. Kears?
No, ma'am. Just that, the only thing is, like.
You'll have to go to the microphone. Yeah, and you got to tell us who you are again.
I'm sorry. Once again, my name is Martha Kears. The property in question is 100 West Miller Street. Like she said, it does face the main highway, which is 17. As a little girl, I remember, well, it wasn't Beck. It was Palatka Nissan. Now Beck is everywhere. Well, we grew up in that same area, but once again, the, the house that she's talking to about, I remember it was another bail bondsman that lived there, Mr. Jack. I don't know. I remember him. He lived in there, and he also ran his business from that same place on the side, which is a little side door. He had a little office there. So it's been commercial property for the longest, and it's been C2. It's been urban. All the people that lived up in there, which my grandmother used to live up in there, too, all the people that lived up in there, they still live back towards Toad's Road on the other side, but right there, Mr. Mosley, he's been there forever and a day. He's the only house that's down there besides the house in the front, which is commercial. And that property, like I say, the house has always been commercial property anyways.
Okay, just getting it consistent.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just driving by, it looked like it was used for residential purposes currently.
It is, and my brother stays there. So my brother is there, and it is used for residential purpose, but it's also commercial. So you can, my thing was when I get older, if I wanted, because all my kids got grown and they left me, so they And staff finds that the proposed rezoning to C3 is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map, consistent with the location requirements, compatible with the surrounding uses. Staff recommends approval for the request to amend the zoning map from commercial retail to commercial general for the subject parcels.
Thank you, Wendy. Any questions of Wendy? My only question is, this is future land use of commercial, and the parcel we just did is urban service. Is that just something that just never got caught in the overall walk of things?
I really can't say.
Okay.
The previous parcel was both commercial and urban service.
Yeah, okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, over here.
I know, I keep having to find you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Oftentimes, lines are just drawn, and sometimes they're not in line with the configuration of the parcel. So the previous one was split, but that would be one.
We've got a lot of that going on in Putnam County. We've worked to take care of some of it this past couple of months. Any other questions of staff? Okay. You've spoke once. Do you have anything you would like to add, Mrs. Kears?
No ma'am, just that the only thing is the microphone.
You'll have to go to the microphone. Yeah, and you've got to tell us who you are again.
I'm sorry. Once again, my name is Martha Kears. The property in question is 100 West Miller Street. Like she said, it does face the main highway, which is 17. As a little girl, I remember, well, it wasn't Beck, it was Palatka Nissan. Now Beck is everywhere. Well, we grew up in that same area, but once again, the house that she's talking about, I remember it was another bail bondsman that lived there, Mr. Jack. I don't know. I remember him. He lived in there, and he also ran his business from that same place on the side, which is the little side door. He had a little office there. So it's been commercial property for the longest, and it's been C2, it's been urban. All the people that lived up in there, which my grandmother used to live up in there too, all the people that lived up in there, they still live back towards Tolls Road on the other side, but right there, Mr. Mosley, he's been there forever and a day. He's the only house that's down there besides the house in the front, which is commercial.
Okay.
And that property, like I say, the house has always been commercial property anyways.
Okay, just getting it consistent.
I do have a question.
Yes ma'am.
Just driving by, it looked like it was used for residential purposes currently.
It is, and my brother stays there. So my brother is there, and it is used for residential purpose, but it's also commercial. So you can, my thing was, when I get older, if I wanted, because all my kids got grown and they left me, so they moved on. So I said one day that I will occupy that particular property, and me and my husband were like, we'll downsize and we'll stay there, and if he wanted to still, which I run a daycare, but if he still wanted to run his business out of there, it'd still be commercial. I don't know.
Okay, so having a home business. How does that fit in the scheme of things, Wendy?
Well, because it has been consistently a home, it's existing nonconform, it's...
It's existing nonconform, yeah.
So one of her requests, well, actually, in the request, it said remain, the house to remain. So the house will remain. And as long as, in the commercial zoning district, as long in, as long as it has a direct impact with a business, there is a provision in the code to have a residential element to, and it's in the one building. It's the old version of living upstairs from your business or behind your business.
Okay. Make sense? Any other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Kears.
Yes ma'am, thank you.
Hearing no other questions, do I hear a motion and get this on the table for a vote?
So move R21-12, we approve the rezoning from retail C2 to commercial C3.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joey. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, like sign. And I vote aye as well. So thank you for being here, and you're welcome to stay. We're going to be spending some time doing some very interesting work on numbers. We don't want to give anybody the wrong impression. We're welcome to have you here.
And this isn't, it's kind of related to the first one we did about annexing. What is the deal with, the only way you get utilities is you have to annex into the city?
Jim, you want to answer that question?
Actually, Gabe is leaning into the mic. He's ready to go.
It depends on what utilities. So if it's a City of Palatka utilities, my understanding is that they do require annexation. There is a slight issue with that insofar as you can't just annex any property into the city. So it has to be close to a city boundary. You can't just annex and create a, what the statute would call sprawl by just going along a corridor. So, but if it's in East Palatka, then it would be the county, and they would not have to annex.
So Palatka utilities, on the East Palatka utilities as well?
No.
Okay, but that's, it just is confusing to me.
The City of Palatka has their water sewer system and have long had a provision that they will allow county property to obtain their services as long as they become city property in the process. And if you look at the city boundary of Palatka...
Oh, it's crazy. Yeah, that's...
And that's because of all of the random annexation that's gone on.
Is that legal?
The statute does not permit annexation along a corridor, as apparently has been done sometime in the past. I mean, it's evident in the map of Palatka that that's been done, but no, the statute would not permit.
The current statute, right.
The Florida statute on annexations. I can't remember what the section is right now, but it has a list of standards by which an annexation has to be judged. And in the case that the city wished to annex a piece of property that violated, potentially violated that statute, the county would then raise an objection based on that statute.
I just know JEA utilities, they're all over. They're in St. John's County, they're in Nassau, and that just seems to me as why, Palatka, they only have to gain by giving utility or selling utilities.
True.
So it just makes, it seems such a backwards way.
They want your population to be counted as well.
Then you become a city taxpayer.
And you become a city taxpayer. So this is a historical thing. If you look at any of the municipalities in Putnam County, you'll see that there have been a lot of these kinds of annexations. And historically, over the years, once they started providing public utilities in these municipalities, people close by were like, oh, I can, I don't have to have a well anymore. I'm buying a house, I don't have to have a well. Pull me in, you know? And it's happened, and it's been, it's created a rather odd situation that we have to deal with.
Yeah, I was just curious.
It's all right.
Thank you.
No, you're new to this. This is okay. We're going to now go into the review of the revised data and analysis for the comprehensive plan. What we have done is Jim met with Commissioner Rawls, who had the lion's share of the questions about the data and analysis. And admittedly, the data was not the most current data that was available. This process started over a year ago, and when that data was collected over a year ago, yes, it was the most recent data. But the fact that Census has done another projection, and Bieber has done another projection, and we've got new material and new data, and the new material really does add a definite positive spin to Putnam County. What we have done in the future land use element, we've done mainly two things, well, three things. We've had the data updated to give the current and most recent data available. Now, we're stuck. I mean, yes, the overall Florida Census numbers have come out. Census is not projected to do county level data until August. We want to get this thing going before August. So we're going to use projections based on the 2010 census. We've added the data, and we've also added graphic analysis of any of the data that lent itself to be analyzed graphically. Doing that, we were able to give a bird's eye view, a quick picture, a snapshot of that data, so you didn't have to, whoever's looking at it can see it up close and not have to really dig into the numbers and try to make sense of it and say, well, what does this really mean? You can look at it in picture form, and it speaks a thousand words. We also did a lot of editing in the narrative sections. One of the key overarching principles that we followed with the comp plan, we're following with this, is to keep it positive and keep it simple. But we wanted to get the information across, we wanted to provide the information, and this is not perfect, and we're still, you know, there's still some igly wigglies in it. And I told Jim today, I'm going to be sending him some new charts and get the colors better because I just can't abide the pink that I put in there. But I was trying to color match the banners, and I couldn't do that. So anyhow, we'll start with the land use element. And what I would like to do with you all is go through it, and where you have questions, we'll go to it, rather than going through it page by page and line by line. Does that make sense to all of you? This is your strikeout underlined version. And basically, we start on page one with the introduction. So we changed the population projection for 2020 is 72,723 people. So we're using that number throughout the document, and... Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. It doesn't sound like it's working. May I interject just a moment? I wanted to bring to your attention the fact that the Census data has figures that are a little more, so looking at 2019 figures for the population, the Census data shows an actual increase of 0.2%, whereas our data here is showing a decrease. And there was a decrease between 2010 and 2018, but since then, I think the upward trend started in 2019, and the estimates right now for July 1st, 2019 are 74,521, with an estimated percentage change of an increase of 0.2%.
Okay, we're using July 1, 2020.
Okay. So, and that, it's possible that that was straight from Bieber then, and they have slightly...
Everything we understand came either from Bieber or EDR, and we're using the Bieber medium numbers. So we can verify that with Bieber and make sure that's right.
Okay.
Bieber is a unit of the University of Florida, so...
Right.
I'm just telling everybody up here, we're learning a lot of new acronyms very quickly.
Yes.
So we know that the cities have grown slightly, the county has decreased slightly. The unincorporated area of the county is what has decreased, and the whole county has decreased. We're looking at the fact that maybe that slowing down, when we look at, we get into the housing unit and we look at some of the development that's going on, we'll see that we've got some positivity going on, so. Anybody have any questions? We're up to page three. Anything else?
Page three.
Gabe, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, why wouldn't we use the more aggressive numbers that he, is there a reason why we wouldn't use the Census numbers that he just referred to?
That was in 2019. We've got 2020.
So they went down?
Apparently.
Wow, okay.
But remember, this is trend analysis, based on the 2010 census and based on activity since 2010. And how they determine and make those, create those numbers is one of those crystal ball kinds of things. So I know there's a lot of different formula and algorithms that work this, but that's what we're looking at. But I agree with you. And I think the decision not to go with the more aggressive Bieber high numbers, that was made pretty early on to go with the medium. Anything on that?
Madam Chair, if I may, it may not indicate a decrease from one year to the other. It may just be that the trend and the methods that the two different agencies use may be slightly different. So it may be that Bieber has just underestimated a little bit more than the Census Bureau, but I think both of them do show an upward trend at this point.
So just so I'm clear, both of these are projections, they're not actual Census numbers?
These are estimates, right. These are estimates based on trends analysis from the 2010 census. All right, moving on, I'm on page four. Does anybody have any question there? 2006, or, I'm sorry, page five is just continuation. And then moving on to page six, and this is showing housing vacancy in unincorporated Putnam County. The numbers were updated and verified. And this came from the Schimberg Center for Affordable Housing at the University of Florida, and it's a five-year estimate for 2014 to 2019. And these are their numbers.
I don't like their numbers.
Yeah.
I mean, I find it hard to believe that there's 7,000 vacancies.
I don't believe it.
And I'm in the rental business?
Well...
That number is closer to zero than it is 7,000.
If you go into the narrative, one of the explanations for that was a lot of the housing in Putnam County, a good bit of it, is seasonal. And they count that seasonal housing as vacant for this particular count, and that throws it and skews it off pretty dramatically.
If I own a second home in Florida, and I use it six months out of the year, I don't count it as vacant.
Well, again, this is how we're taking their numbers. I think if it's not occupied full-time, full-year, it's counted as being vacant. And the reason we do have such high numbers here in Putnam County is because of the seasonal migratory transit population. We have people that have part-time homes here in Putnam County. We also have workers that come in on a seasonal basis for farm work, and those are also counted in that seasonal count. So what's counting as vacant right now largely is seasonal.
Madam Chair, would, I just hate to see the negative numbers when I feel like they're just totally wrong. Is there a way that you could put a star by that and then explain that down at the bottom?
We certainly could, don't you think? We can do that.
I mean, you've got for rent, less than 3%. That would be a more accurate number.
Okay.
Madam Chair, what are we going to say on the bottom?
We will say that, I'll put an asterisk there on the other vacant, and, or the vacant housing, or other vacant housing, and...
Which I thought he was referring to, Mr. Danzler, you're speaking of vacant housing units?
7,010 is what I was talking about, that 7,010 number. I just, I just...
And that's part of the, that's part of the blue wedge.
I was going to say, it's shown on the chart.
It's shown on the chart.
Well, that's true. There is, yeah.
But that 7,000 looks really, really odd.
It looks terrible.
It's further explained, when we get into the housing unit, there's a table, there's so much duplication with this data. There's a table that shows the distribution of housing among seasonal housing and full-time residency and rental housing, so...
Yeah, that, your chart does explain it there, so I withdraw my request.
Not to worry. We won't put anything, Mr. Troyanna.
It's somewhere in here, and it may be in housing, but the other vacant, there was a further explanation somewhere, and I can't find it right now, that a lot of them are probably, you know, need to be torn down.
Yep, condemnable.
They're not habitable.
Right. My only question, and I don't think this one got answered, Jim, was on page seven. The planning area consists of the population of the entire county incorporated and unincorporated?
I would think it is.
Okay.
Based on what it's saying there. I mean, you certainly could read into that, again, this comprehensive plan is for the unincorporated portions of Putnam County only. However, the planning area, you're looking at, you know, growth, I think, in the entire county.
Okay. And the population, we're looking at the entire county population as well. And I tried to explain a little bit more positive spin on it down that last paragraph. We get into the existing land use data, and it gets a little tricky in here. We had some that were in other areas, and we had to move them around, and we had some that were not in there. I put high-density residential back in because it's in there right now, it's in the plan, and it's going to be taken out of the plan because there's been absolutely zero occupancy, zero acreage in high-density residential. So that's coming out. And, you know, showing that over 87% of the land is in three categories of conservation, Ag 1 and Ag 2. It's big. We know that we have a very rural county, we have a very agrarian county, we have a county that has a lot of conservation land, and that's not a bad thing. It's not a bad thing at all. Okay, page eight, moving on to page nine. We do have the military compatibility standards because of the bombing ranges and the proximity to Fort Benning, or Fort, ah, not Fort Benning, Camp Landing. Put me in the wrong state there for a minute. Moving on to page 10, this is where we look at the allocation of existing land use. Ag 2 is our big one. Ag 1, Ag 2, and then you take conservation, and you've got over three-quarters of that pie has already been taken out. So there's a lot of rural land that is going to stay rural land and not be developed. I'm going to answer a question right here that I know has come up. Why did we increase the density in agriculture? We did that totally in response to requests from Ag... the density in agriculture? We did that totally in response to requests from Ag owners, because when they're trying to leverage their land for borrowing purposes with the Florida Farm Credit Bureau, if they have a higher density, they have a higher loan value, and it gives them more operating costs to run their property, so that's why that was done. And we have to remember that a piece of property can only be split one time because of the Florida Land Split Law. So, if you've got a 5,000-acre farm or 5,000-acre parcel, you can cut it into two parcels, you can have one acre and 4,999, but you, you know, as long as it's, it's in that category without a PUD put on it, you can't do anything else. But it would require a PUD to develop an area...
Or subdivision.
Or a subdivision, yeah, so you'd have to establish one of the two. Any questions on page 10?
Can you use your microphone, please, sir?
Microphone.
When you look at the conservation figure on that chart, it almost makes you feel like we shouldn't have any more conservation lands in Putnam County. It's no wonder we have such a low tax ba, tax base.
That's true, because it's, it's...
Why?
Public land. Yep, the Ag, and they have Ag exemption and green belt exemption, so we're looking at our tax base based on, you know, less than 25% of our total land mass, so. Now, we've got some commercial development on agricultural land, we've got the four solar facilities, and those do generate a, a higher tax rate than just plain Ag land, but it's, it's one of the good reasons for converting large parcels into those solar farms, because that does put more taxable income back on the property. So, anything else on page 10? Moving on to page 11. This area of future urban reserve, we took the word "future" out, and I don't know why that turned green, I have no clue.
It's all right, so remember, this is just gonna be in draft format.
Right.
When I'm finished with this, I'll accept all the changes.
Right.
And they'll be just regular font.
Up on residential, are we, is nine dwelling place, not nine dwellings per acre the max on rural residential?
Urban service.
Anybody have an answer to that? Can we check that and make that two, make sure that 2 to 9 is correct? It's on first, first line of paragraph two.
Urban reserve?
Under rural residential.
I'm sorry, rural residential.
First line, a density range of 2 to 9 dwellings per unit, can we check that, that nine acres?
I'm in the book now.
Okay.
That's a negative.
What's the answer?
It's a no, it's not that.
All right, what is it?
I don't believe we can do nine anywhere unless we got water and sewer.
All right, right.
Madam Chair, are, are you referring to the current?
Current.
Okay, so you'd like to know what the current density is allowed in rural residential land use are?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I made notes as I was going through this thing the other day, and that's...
I can find that for you in just a moment.
Okay, you can name that soon then. All right, anything else on page 11? We'll hold that for Gabriel's answer. Page 12. One of the things that I did a little amendment on was the historical and archaeological sites in Putnam County, and added American dwelling places, Spanish, Native American dwellings and Spanish exploration in this area, and there is confirmed evidence of both of those. Most of the historic structures here do date back to mid-19th century to, through the 20th century. So, we've got four structures on the National Registers, Register of Historical Places. Emphasize St. John's River and all the value that it adds to this area, and all of the opportunities that it affords for recreation and for peaceful living. So, table FLUE on page 13 shows the land distribution changes since 2010. Agriculture has gone down by 8,700, conservation's gone up by 6,700, commercial's gone down by 254, mining has gone up by 2,165, and that was the conversion of the other mine out at Grandin Sand, Sandpitt, and very few changes otherwhere, other places, there has been no use in high-density residential. So, that table...
Are you gonna change the header so you can read it?
What do you mean? It will change, it will, that will change when we accept, they accept the changes in word.
It's gonna change the color.
Yeah, it'll change it back to, to white.
Okay.
It'll change that contrast back, if not, we'll change it. Okay, and the graph on page 14 analyzes that and shows the changes. This is one of the graphs that I will work on color on and get them a little bit more intense. Now, we took out the list of historically designated places in Melrose. The reason for that is, there are other historically designated places around Putnam County that aren't in Melrose, and if we don't have all of those listed, why are we just listing Melrose? So, we talk about Melrose, and we talk about their historic area, but we also have the South and North Historic Districts in Palaca, while they're not in the, the unincorporated areas, they're still Putnam County Historic Districts. Crescent City has quite a few, there's one National Register home in Crescent City, and there's several around the county, so that's why, that's why we took Melrose out. And I say "we," that was a corporate "we," I did it.
Madam Chair, if I may, I do have that...
Do you have any answer?
Yes, ma'am. For rural residential, the current allowed density there is one dwelling per five acres.
Okay. Jim, back on page 11.
So, it becomes one per five rather than two to nine?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So, on page 11, rural residential, which is the third section down, in cha, just has a density range, just puts us a density of one to, one to five.
Yeah, one per five acre.
So, I'm gonna change that, residential development can achieve a density of up to one dwelling unit per five acres.
Correct.
Right?
That's, that's what it is currently, but I think we changed that in our proposal.
It's changed in the revision.
Yes.
But in, see, this is, this is based on current, so we're having to go back and think in two different worlds here.
The, it's strange, because this, this says 2 to 9 dwelling units per acre, and unless that was the intent of changing rural residential to 2 to 9 dwelling units per acre, I don't think it was, so...
No.
I would think, I, I'll leave it up to the commission to...
I think, is everybody in agreement to put in what's in the current comp plan of 1 to 5?
Yes.
So, again, we're looking at urban?
Urban, no, we're looking at rural residential.
Sorry.
Well, it's what it currently is, 1 to 5, so...
It's currently 1 to 5, yes.
It is.
Right. So, we'll change that to 1 to 5, but we did change that, I think.
Changed it.
I don't have that with me, but...
We did change it to something.
Well, I have it here, so, oh, no, this is your changes, and this is the, the actual GOPS. So, again, you said rural residential, correct?
Yes.
So, residential development shall be allowed at a density of one dwelling unit per 2.5 acres.
That's what I thought.
Is the change that was approved by the commission.
Right. We gotta remember that, that sounds like a lot, it doubles that density, but we've gotta look at the, the small amount of land that's in the rural residential category as it is, and a lot of that's in large parcels, so without subdivisions and, and, you know, parcel splits, that doesn't happen, so...
So, we're gonna be at the 2.5?
We're gonna be at 2.5.
Good, okay.
So, again, I'm changing that to one dwelling unit per 2.5 acres.
That's what we're changing to, and so we're going to, but right now, this should say 1 to 5. This document, which is the data analysis...
Last year's.
For last, for last...
See what you're saying?
Periods, yeah.
Got you.
It just, you know why I have gray hair now, huh? I got a lot more the last week. Folks, we didn't get the economic development analysis back until Friday afternoon, so it's been a little iffy.
So, that's not the highest in Putnam County, though?
No, no.
That's what, but, that's what the rest of the, so is that accurate, that's what's written here?
Let me read it again.
Wait a minute.
Urban service is the highest density.
Wait a minute, then I think I'm changing it in the wrong place.
Okay, rural residential.
Right, and it's not listed there. Let me just change this then back to the way it was.
On page 11.
We're on page 11, rural residential, this category has a density range of 2 to 9 dwelling units per acre. We need to change that, has a density of one acre, one dwelling per five acres, allowable density of one dwelling per five acres. And we will take public comments at the end of each section.
I see what you're saying, this category has a density range, I see it, it's written.
Got it, 1 to 5.
One dwelling unit...
Per five acres.
Five acres.
Right.
Got you, I understand now.
And we will take public comments at the end of each element, so when we get to the end of public future land use, if someone has a comment, we'll take comments then, and just...
I fixed it, Madam Chair, it's good.
You're a good man, Charlie Brown. All right, 15 and 16 are out. Everybody okay with that? Moving on to 17, any questions or concerns on 17? I did add the Flagler's Haw County, Haw Creek Basin does drain into Crescent Lake. Page 18, some of this we took out because it's really not what we have. The formatting, I accidentally centered apparently on page 19, can you?
Yeah, you did.
19 and 20, can you correct that? And the original data and analysis does not show the mine, the land mine, or the land, the sand mine out in East Palaca, the Big Horse Mine that's owned by SRM Materials, that was not on the original one, and we've added that back in, so...
I fixed that.
Yep, got it. So, moving on now to page 22, that's come out, page 23 has come out, page 24 basically has come out, because it was redundant. Page 25, we are now into the age distribution in Putnam County, I did add, I didn't add anything there, we just did the, the 2010, 2020, and 30 projections, and you can see the graphic analysis of that on page 26, showing that our smallest population is those people between the ages of 45 and 60, and our largest population is the population of people over 60. So, we have a substantial under 20 age group, and a fairly stable under 45, but then from 45 to 60, we have a smaller group, but that's a smaller, smaller grouping also, it's only 15 years, so. Going on to page 27, we're talking here about residential additions and deletions and demolitions. The availability of services on page 29 shows the levels of service on our roads that are over capacity and which ones are over capacity. Many of those are under construction and, you know, in the pipeline to be corrected, so...
What was you saying about demolitions?
It'll come.
Okay, 'cause I got a question about that.
We, we move things around a little bit. We don't have a stormwater level of service deficiencies in Putnam County, which is good. We have good potable water, we have good water treatment. We talk about water wells and cones of influence. On page 32, by Florida statute, we're required to allow electrical distribution substations in any land use category, and we have been doing that. Then we get into the needs and recommendations. Not too many there. There is one question I have, and I, I don't know if we can make this more specific, but on page 34, item 7, "Due to the nature's reliance on silviculture, consider adding objectives and policies related to rural agricultural industrial centers." Is that something we want to leave in? And it says "if applicable." Do we want to keep that like it is, or... Okay.
I don't see why we need it.
Want to take it out?
I think we should take it out.
We'll take it out.
All right, take out item 7 there, and it should re, recalibrate your, your line numbers. And then we go into the maps, we get into the, the residential demolitions and everything in the housing unit.
I knew it was there.
Yeah, it's coming. All right, we're at the end of the future land use element, we do have the maps, the only thing that has to be added on a map is on the minerals map, no, the mine map. Where is it? Where we show the, the peat, kaolin, and sand mines, we didn't show the sand mine out in, in the Hastings area. So, let me find it, which map is that?
It's on page...
Page 44, are you looking for?
Yes, 44.
Okay.
Is page 37 staying, I thought we took out the historic districts, is that what I understood when I go?
This is... Yeah, we're taking that out, so we can take out page 37.
All right, let me go back to it.
And we need to take it out of the table of contents for that area.
So, page 37 is a, is a map?
Right, and it can come out, because we're not listing that historic district and showing it.
I got you, so let me just write a note to myself, and I'll take it out.
Yep. On page 44, we do need to put a sand notation over out on 207, and you can see it on the overall zoning map where that is.
One second, Madam Chair, let me get to you, so I'm going back to 44?
Yep.
And I'm looking to...
You're looking to add a green circle.
I'm sorry, one second, I'm on page too many. All right, a green circle where?
Need to add a green circle over where the SRM mine is, and basically, it is above Cracker, Cracker Swamp Road.
It'll be right there by that 207.
Yeah, it's right where the little pink spot is.
That's what it is, shell, so...
Yeah, so it just needs to be shown more clearly there.
A little tiny pink spot.
Yeah, I think it was mostly on the outside of the border.
Yeah, it's mostly in St...
I saw it.
It's mostly in St. John's County.
Yes, and that does straddle the line.
I thought that somebody spilled some ink, that's what it looked like.
All right, so I'm adding...
You're adding a, a pink circle or something for the, the shell mine.
You said green to start with.
It's shell and, and, it's a combination of shell and sand, isn't it? Mostly shell.
So, what color is it?
Pink. Pink. I just put a little pink.
So I'm adding a pink circle, and it's gonna be at what mine?
It's not on, it's on page 44, it's up.
It's actually got a piece of a peat dot right on the line.
There's a little tiny pink splitter, little, looks like the edge of a pink star.
Oh, it's just south of, southwest of Crescent City?
Nope, you're up on 207.
You see the 207 square?
I do.
Go southwest about 3/8 of an inch.
Southeast.
Or southeast. Right on the county line.
Oh, this little pink thing right there?
Yeah, it looks like...
That's where you're gonna put a pink blob.
So, the cer, so the little blob there, you want to circle?
Whatever.
Whatever.
The blob is actually the outline of the land.
Right. Well, actually, they've got notations there. It's yellow on the future land use map. So just put a, just put a pink thing there, something pink.
All right, I got you.
All right. That gets that mine on the maps.
Why would that be pink?
Shell.
Oh, it's shell, okay.
Or fuchsia.
Whatever, pink. Listen, that soil map, the soil distribution map is crazy. That's the one that's coated in many colors.
I challenge anybody to actually read that map.
Okay.
Does that then finish with these maps then, Madam Chair, for this first element?
For right now. Ms. Kukernut, you would like to speak, and I'm not sure what I, the CLUP? Not sure what you're designated there, on your speaker's card, you've said data section for the CLUP.
Comprehensive Land Use Plan.
Okay, we're not, well, we're not on the land use plan, but we're on the...
Well, it's really part of the comprehensive.
Just, just come talk to us, please. And please speak in the mic and tell us who you are.
My name is Sandra Kukernut. I live at 117 Point of Woods Trail, Palatka. Good afternoon, Commissioners. On pages 4 and 7, under Population Projection and Accommodating Growth, includes a list of hopes of pop, for population growth of current county commissioners, not data. Putnam County has thousands of undeveloped lots. The current Comprehensive Land Use Plan states those lots would take care of projected growth. The current draft seems to ignore existing undeveloped lots and deletes the line, "This limited growth can easily be accommodated on existing undeveloped land," on page 7.
Okay, let's go back to page 4, can you tell us specifically where you're, what you're speaking of?
Population projection.
Okay, and what, what area of that?
Trying to look where it's crossed out.
Are you speaking to the county leadership, great and realistic hope that over the next 15 years will result in positive changes across the demography from the addition of population to parallel increases in personal wealth and increases in the tax base? Is that where you're speaking at?
I didn't know, I'm gonna have to get... Trying to find it. Okay, under accommodating growth.
On what?
The second paragraph, right in the middle of the second paragraph.
On what page?
Across page 7.
Okay, we're off of page 4, we gotta go, give us a minute.
Page 7?
Page 7?
Page 7.
In the middle of the second paragraph. "This limited growth can easily be accommodated on existing undeveloped land."
Wait a minute.
There are still...
That has been stricken.
Yes. And there are still thousands of undeveloped lots.
Yes, we have, we know we have thousands of platted subdivisions that are not even viable for construction. And those are things that are being looked at as time goes on. It's, it's gonna take forever to get all those things done. But each, each lot in that would have to be individually vacated. Those, to vacate those subdivisions would, is gonna be very, very intensive. And it's not something we can do with a broad brush. We talked about that. But yes, but we did strike that one sentence because we want to show the potential of Putnam County in this data analysis, not the weaknesses and limitations.
Well, I encourage you to work with some of the nonprofit groups and try to get a grant from the state of Florida for land acquisition, where you have these antiquated, undeveloped, relatively undeveloped subdivisions in high recharge areas and, you know, other important areas in the wildlife corridor, say. And, uh... Put together a plan for acquiring, reacquiring the properties. The city of Fort Lauderdale designated an area that was at the end of their runways to the airport, which was, really wasn't good for people living there because of the noise and all the complaints they had to put up with. And they went in there and bought up all that property, you did not have a choice. They either relocated you, or they bought it. So if you've got a good reason environmentally, I would think that that would be a viable way of doing it. But I, perhaps you should have a policy that said that you would work with the state to do something like that.
Right, that would be something that the county commission would have to really look at rather than us because we just deal with the land development code and the comprehensive plan. But, um, we do realize we've got a lot of land that is sitting vacant that is in little tiny cookie cutter, cut-up jigsaw puzzles.
Okay. Well, I, it's just that, I question why you X'd out that sentence in here. Yet on page 27, you acknowledge that additional densities are not needed to meet population growth.
That's correct. One, that's not the reason we did the additional densities. We looked at that across the whole spectrum, and one of the biggest reasons was the ag increase. And the other biggest increase was in urban service, which is again, a small portion of the county. But we did look at all of that. But we felt like there were some areas where it was beneficial to the county to have the capability, especially in areas where we already have infrastructure in place. Especially the urban services area. So, um... That's the thinking behind that. Yes, we don't need the additional density to meet what Bieber says is our anticipated population growth. We dispute the anticipated population growth that Bieber has stated.
Well, I, the public, year after year, having workshops, I've, I've gone to probably six or more workshops talking about future development in Putnam County. And they constantly said, "If you want to increase population density, do it in the existing urban service area or the urban reserve area." So...
And we've done that.
This is the opposite by, you know, giving density to people that own ag lands. Now, they may not be able to, you know, break their property up into 1 acre parcels or whatever. But, once you've given them that density, you're not gonna be able to go back and deny them that density when they come in to do development.
Well, they would have to do a planned unit development or a subdivision to do more than one lot split.
But say their property is not appropriate for development.
Well, and that would fail the development review process with the county. It would fail the rezoning possible, the process. It will only be rezoned and allowed to be developed if it is appropriate and suitable for that land. So, a lot of things go into it, especially the development review process. That's where all the different agencies come together and review closely plans for any kind of development on any parcel in the county. And that includes the Health Department, the St. John's River Water Management District, it includes the county, the Department of Emergency Services within the county, planning and development. All of these agencies come together and work with this. It's a, it's a regular process to get something on the books. Or even to amend a planned unit development. So, there's a lot of work that goes into it. I know, I, I know your heart is in the environmental aspect of this county. And you, you project your, your passion very well. And we appreciate that. The agricultural change was made at the request of 100% of the farmers we spoke with. And we spoke with a number of different agricultural owners. And they all said, especially in today's environmental, or economical climate, if they had the opportunity to leverage their land for a higher loan value for operations, they'd have a higher return on their operation. So, that's why we have done that. But, we certainly appreciate your passion, Ms. Kukernut. And I never can pronounce your name right, and I apologize.
Kukernut.
Kukernut, okay.
On page 27, under land availability. The planning staff stated at the last Putnam County Commission meeting on the Comprehensive Land Use Plan amendments that increasing ag densities will not change the residential densities, excuse me, to which ag landowners can develop their properties at this time with the density bonus system.
Well now, we're, we're, the density bonus system has been removed from the comprehensive plan for the, for the 2015, 20, or 2020, 2035 Comprehensive Plan. The, the point system has been taken out. What are you specifically speaking of on page 27?
I'm basically, um... Page 27. Right at the end, with the needs of farmers who can leverage higher loans.
Right.
Okay, if, if they can already develop their land at those densities, how does this change that as far as loans go?
They have, right now, their densities for Ag 1 is 1 unit per 10 acres, and Ag 2 is 1 unit per 20 acres.
But then if you apply the density bonus plan...
The density bonus is going away.
I know, but in the current plan...
Right.
They could still get a higher density.
They could.
So the potential is still there now.
It is there in the current plan, but what we're doing is we're dropping the overall ag density to 1 to 10. And if your piece of property abuts or has a direct access to a paved road, you can have a 1 unit per 5 acres. So, that mitigates a good bit of what would have been taken into consideration with the point system. But here again, that gives them, right now, they still can't go in there and take a 100 acre lot and divide it into 20 pieces. They can't do that.
Right. But, the Land Use Plan rules over the land development code?
The land use code is a separate item that is a companion piece to the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive Plan has the, has the future land use element, is one of the elements of the comp plan. We're gonna get into the land use code, or land development code, coming up in the next few months. Once this is put to bed, we'll start working on the land development code. And we plan that's gonna take an 18 to 24 month period to do that.
Right, but the, the comprehensive plan guides you in developing the land development code, not vice versa?
Yes, it does, yes. But they're companion pieces in the end. When, when they all get approved and are in use, they're used as companions. And one primarily for zoning, the other for future land use. Anything else?
I, I don't believe that if a farmer sold his development rights to the state in the form of a conservation easement, that he wouldn't be able to obtain a loan to farm his land.
That's something we have not gotten into. But, right now, all conservation lands are publicly held.
You can sell a conservation easement, you can sell your development rights to the state, and the state doesn't own it, they just have bought your development rights.
Do we have a map showing the conservation easements in the county? I know it's not part of our package.
The Clay Ranch is an example.
I, I don't know if I have that, Madam Chair.
Okay.
But they can never develop it.
It can never be developed.
Let's, let's choose.
Exactly, so you're, you're saying that because they have no development rights, that they can't get a loan for, for farming operations? I don't believe that. That's...
They sold their land because that way they didn't have to get a loan. They want to farm for the rest of their lives.
Right, but you're saying that farmers need this density in order to get loans for their farming operation?
Yes, on, I'm trying to think how to say it. On regular ag land, when you sell for conservation, that's a whole different ballgame.
Yeah, we're not, we're not going there.
They, they still have ag land use on their property.
If, if it's sold to conserv, if it's a conservation easement, yes.
Right.
But if it's general conservation land, once it goes into conservation, it doesn't come out.
I'm, I'm talking about conservation easement.
Okay, that's not something that we're, I don't think we've even, that's not part of the comp plan.
I'm just using it as an example.
Right.
In that case, density on their property has nothing to do with whether or not they get a loan for farming.
Joey, can you answer this?
Well, it increases the value of the property.
Well, it increases the value, you did see increases the value in a commercial ag.
Right.
The Clay Ranch deal, they sold that because they want to farm it for the rest of their life. They can get a, a loan on that, but, "I owned a farm before, and I could, if, since the density was so high, my loan value would be way less." Now, at 1 to 5 and 1 to 10, I could get more money to do what I want to do. Now, Clay Ranch, if they want to go get a loan, which they probably could, it's not gonna be very high because it's on conservation. It has to stay ag. But, if I have a, if I can get a loan value and my density's 1 to 5, or 1 to 10, the value of my land is worth more money, they'll give me more money because if they take my land because I can't make the payment, they have a better chance of recouping their money.
It's a financing.
It's, it's, it's a financing situation through Florida Farm Credit. And, um, it's how they do the appraisal of agricultural land. And, if you have a higher density on agricultural land, your appraised value through Florida Farm Credit is higher. It's, I know, it's, it's mud.
Okay, on page 33, under recommendations. Why would you state that you review the density bonus system here if you're eliminating the density bonus system?
Remember, this document is based on the 2010 Comprehensive Plan. And one of the recommendations for the review of, and the plan that we've completed was that we review that point density system. So that's in hindsight. This is based on 2010, saying, "Okay, you need to review that point density system and see what you're gonna do about it as you're reviewing the 2015, 2000, or 2020, 2035 Plan."
But you're saying you're still gonna have a density bonus?
No.
So why is that in there?
Because...
Why would you be reviewing something that doesn't exist?
It exists right now because the new plan has not been adopted yet. So this recommendation is the things we need to, needed to look at in the 2010 Comprehensive Plan. And the density system is in the 2010 Plan. So, what we've got to do is look at every, these are recommendations for things we should look at in the 2010 Plan as we amend it for 2020, 35.
Well, I just thought this is the data section for the 2021 Plan.
It is the data section for that, but the data section, in part, drove the revision of the comp plan. And that's one of the provisions that was driving our change from the point system. And that's why we went, we changed it and had that slight, that accommodation for paved roads. for paved road versus non-paved road in the agricultural section.
Okay. On, let's see. There are two things that I recommend you add. One, there is nothing in the data section about the Ocala to Osceola Wildlife Corridor, which is considered to be one of the most important wildlife corridors in the southeastern U.S. And also, there's nothing in here about the productivity of our silver culture lands. Supposedly, the, the pine lands in North Florida and South Georgia are the most productive in North America. And, and they also have a value in removing carbon from the atmosphere to help avoid further global warming. And I think that should be addressed in the data section as well.
Okay. We thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. We are at the end of Future Land Use Element. We have a question, and a valid question from, I'm going to say it wrong again, Ms. Ko-Ko-Kurnut. Coconut. Ko-Kurnut. It's Dutch. That we look at the possible adding of two statements somewhere, and I'm not sure where we would work these in. And I'm sure that, I'm not sure, but I need to check and see if they're covered elsewhere in other elements of the plan.
It could be at least the one in the conservation. But I have to get the name again of what she mentioned, please.
It's the, what, Seminole, let's see, Osceola?
I'm sorry.
Ocala to Osceola Wildlife Corridor. I know at one time we had a map of that that you had provided to us. We will look and see if we can find a map for that. Is that the only wildlife corridor passing through Putnam County? Okay, we need you to come up to the mic.
There's also at, at least one wildlife corridor that goes from Ocala National Forest to Dunn's Creek State Park. That's also considered important.
Okay. Do you know what agency does the...
I'm, I'm reading it now, Madam Chair. It's on your, it's on your, this is from...
Okay. Yep.
USDA.
USDA. We will make sure we have something on that in here.
Okay.
Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
Anybody objecting to that? And the productivity of silver culture land, I don't know whether, where we would have talked about that and the, the carbon absorption.
Madam Chair, before we move on, would you be accepting just to use this first paragraph?
I got to get it up here so I can see it. Can you take the highlight off? Probably so.
I think that's, that looks good to me.
All right. So, where would you like to insert it? I just want to complete this document if I can.
Jim and I really want to complete this document.
Again, the goal, Madam Chair, if I may, so for the rest of the Commissioners, is that I hope to get this to the B.O.C.C. either tomorrow or by Friday. So, they, they can have this...
I would put it under a recommendation, Jim, that we just add it to one of the recommendations on page 34, is the last one, that we recognize and add it as, as number 11, that we recognize and encourage land, land use through that corridor.
It's going to be 10.
Right.
We did away with 7.
So, if it would be something we want to consider, official recognition of the Osceola, the Ocala to Osceola Wildlife Corridor.
So, can, consider the...
The importance, consider the importance of the Ocala to Osceola Wildlife Corridor in land use designations, in, in future land use.
That looks good.
And then put that note in there, describing what it is.
I just did.
Her other recommendation about the silver culture could go in page 10, under Agriculture, where you, where you put the other stuff about vineyards and...
Okay. Getting to page 10. Well, that...
All right, I'm on page 10.
I, I think we can, currently under Ag 2, one of the largest areas there is range, it's, it's rangeland and, and silver culture right now, is important to the, how would we word that?
Let me just look here. I, I think we can find something from DAX real quick to add to that.
Okay.
One second.
He's got a bag of tricks. He knows where to pull from. I'm so happy.
What effect does that really have on the property?
None. Unless we, one of the things we did that was recognizing that was with the, one of the solar farms was going to put up a 10-foot-high fence with no openings in it. And one of the things we, they accommodated the wildlife corridor because it ran right through that property over in West Putnam.
Okay.
And so, what, what we did was they, Florida Power and Light very graciously provided openings around the drainage areas for wildlife passage. Same thing we talked about out on the Revels property with the deer kind of thing. So, but that wasn't in one of the wildlife corridors. But that one was, the one out in Melrose was.
In other words, we encourage consideration of...
Right. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Madam Chairman, if I may, I'd just like to clarify for the benefit of the public in attendance that adding statements to the data and analysis is not going to change the actual future land use element. So, we can add as many statements as we want, but the future land use element is complete at this point.
Right. Right. The, the Comprehensive Plan portion is completed. This data and analysis is just the final step.
So, the only, the only thing I found, Madam Chair, and there's some definitions of silver, silver culture. So, I, I think we could just write, I, I think what we're asking for is that we recognize the importance that silver culture plays in agricultural areas in Putnam County.
Right. And including the mitigation of the carbon footprint.
So, if our speaker may, can we ask her for some guidance, please?
Sandra, I'm just going to call you Ms. Sandra because I can say that.
Maybe...
If you could give us some language there, it would really helpful. How would we word something about the silver culture and...
Well, you could say that you recognize the importance of silver culture in removing carbon from the atmosphere to help avoid further global warming.
That works?
Something like that.
Madam Chair, this is just a pet peeve of mine. I don't believe in gold, I don't, I don't believe in the global warming part of this. I, I don't know that we're acknowledging that, we're acknowledging that there is something that science really hasn't proved or there's a controversy in the science. So, I would, I would object to that.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
Madam Chair, if I may, we, we might add a statement simply stating that the silver culture operations remove carbon dioxide in the atmosphere, and leave it generally.
And leave it like that?
I would agree with that.
The, the importance of the silver culture land and the removal of...
Okay.
Right. See you at 2:00.
No problem.
Thank you. All right. Anything else on the future land use element?
Just want to make sure, Madam Chair, if I may.
Oh, yeah.
We do recognize the importance of silver culture in removing carbon dioxide from our atmosphere.
Fine.
Very good.
Fine. Very good.
I'm good. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Are you all comfortable with the future land use data and analysis to send it to the County Commission?
Yes.
Michael, are you coming up to talk to us?
You may.
You may. Because we're just about to vote. You stood up at the right...
Well, we're going to do, Madam Chair, if I may, point of clarification. You're going to vote on each individual of the four?
Of the four, yes.
So, just so the, the speaker knows that this is only the first of the four.
This is only on land use.
That's the only part I had time to read.
Believe me, like I say, we didn't get some of it until Friday.
Michael Woodward, 517 Francis Street, Interlochen. Yes, that, that is an issue. The small print public notice in the 4th of May Palatka Daily News read in part that this would be a public hearing regarding final amendments to the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan's data and analysis, and that these amendments are available for review in the Office of the Planning and Development Services Department. They were not.
That is correct. And that's because we didn't get them in time. They were available on Monday?
They were made available to the public yesterday. I was still asking on Monday. It was yesterday afternoon at 2:00 before I was able to get what I had been seeking for some time. I had thought that this material would appear in the agenda packet when that came out last Friday. But no, that was just a big blank spot too. So, finally, yesterday afternoon, I was able to get Planning and Development Services to give me the opportunity to review the proposed amendments to the data and analysis. I'm grateful for that opportunity, but I would like to point out that that hardly provides a sufficient opportunity for the public to thoroughly read, review, understand, digest, and prepare comments upon this level of material.
Thank you. And I appreciate your saying that. One thing I will remind the public is we make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. They will hold a hearing on this on May the 25th, anytime after 9:05 a.m. They will be the ones that will actually adopt this document. All we are doing is recommending this document to the Board of County Commissioners.
I am familiar with the process, Madam Chair.
I know you are. But, that gives you another two weeks' time to mull it over. And, and please do. I mean, we're trying to make this document as good as it can be. And we're trying to make Putnam County look positive and look like we really... Do you know how to wear shoes down here? Grew up here, so, you know, it's, it's challenging. Anything else, sir?
To the document.
Yes, sir. What page?
Well, actually, I want to start with Florida Statute 163.3177, which as I'm sure you know, provides the information about the requirements for data and analysis to support comprehensive plans and comprehensive plan amendments. And I'm just going to read a few excerpts. "The Comprehensive Plan must be clearly based on appropriate data. Data must be taken from professionally accepted sources. Local government may use original data so long as methodologies are professionally accepted. The Comprehensive Plan shall be based upon permanent and seasonal population estimates and projections, which shall either be those published by the Office of Economic and Demographic Research or generated by the local government based upon a professionally accepted methodology." So, I was glad to see the updates from Bieber, EDR, Census Projections. That's good that that's being brought current. But as was pointed out earlier, there's also a good deal of speculation that's been interjected into this document about future population increases that is very speculative. Speculation sometimes turns out to be right. Don't get me wrong. You may be right. But it's still speculation. It's not data and analysis.
Well, right. But the data, we did update, and all of the data is, is verifiable through resources. The actual data is mostly Bieber, mostly Census, some from the Schenburg Center.
As to the speculation about increased, greatly increased population here in the future, should that come to pass, should that come to pass, what is omitted from the data and analysis is the data regarding the current carrying capacity under the Comprehensive Plan's existing densities, which would accommodate approximately three times the existing population of the unincorporated area of Putnam County. This allocation of density data, or holding capacity data, was a prominent feature of the 2010 data and analysis, but was strangely omitted this time around. But let's, let's talk about why we're really doing this. The subject came up earlier today, and I'm glad that you addressed it. I want to address it further. On page 27, language has been added to this draft of the data and analysis saying, in part, and this is in the paragraph that has "Land Availability" as a heading, about two-thirds down the page, about the middle of that paragraph, it reads...
Give us a second. We get to it.
Tell me when you're ready.
I'm watching the screen.
Further.
Okay.
"There are two striking needs be for higher residential density. The first is in the urban services area where water and sewer are available. The other would be in response to the needs of area farmers who can leverage higher loan values for farm operations where densities are higher." On the first one, I want you to know I agree with you.
I love that. You make my day.
"Increasing the density in the urban service areas is a very rational thing to do, and it is consistent with one of the primary goals of growth management, which is to accommodate the greatest possible percentage of residential growth in areas where the necessary infrastructure and services are present and are readily available and can be provided cost-effectively." So, no problem with that at all. That is a good thing, as far as I'm concerned. As to the second, however, "In response to the needs of area farmers who can leverage higher loan values for farm operations when densities are higher, you may not know it to look at me, but I come from six generations of farmers. Yes, I can name them all. I won't, but I can. So, I have some notion of the necessity for financing ongoing farm operations. But I can't help wondering if, when farmers get to the point that they need loans that are greater than the existing value of their land to finance their ongoing operations, if maybe something isn't wrong somewhere. If, on the other hand, we are talking about farmers who want to maybe expand into a more intensive agricultural use of their property, maybe go into row crops from rangeland or something like that, that would make a good case for a future land use map amendment to go from Ag 1 to Ag 2, which would get them their double density. But that would have to be looked at on a case-by-case basis. I'm sure these farmers, these, these landowners are very influential and are very persuasive. I don't know because I didn't hear too many of them show up at public hearings and say it in front of you, God, and everybody the way that the people are doing here today. But, what I would like to know is whether it really makes sense, whether it's really fair to all of the people who own land in, reside in the rural residential areas and the agricultural areas in this county, to make a sweeping change that doubles, or in some cases quadruples, the density for everyone and everyone's land in those areas, whether they want it or not, and I don't want it on mine, to accommodate some number of landowners who want greater dens... who want greater density on their particular parcels for their particular reasons. There's got to be a way to do this that doesn't make everybody else pay for a few people's financial difficulties or problems. There's got to be a way to do this that helps the people who do have those problems, gives them a way forward, that doesn't involve making everyone else pay for it. Because in the end, doubling or quadrupling the densities in the rural and agricultural areas of the unincorporated part of this county will result in more residences going into those areas sooner or later, and it will permanently require the rest of the tax base to subsidize that, with higher-cost services being projected into those areas. So, fine that you want to increase the density in the urban service areas, that makes sense, but wholesale increase of the density in all of the agricultural and rural residential areas cannot be supported simply because some farmers want to borrow more money.
Thank you. I will say and remind everyone that the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan have been approved. Am I correct, Jim?
Recommended by you, Madam Chair.
Recommended by this board to the Board of County Commissioners. So, this is our process of going through this data and analysis that was sent back to us to redo. So that's why we're here today, but we appreciate your coming forward. I always appreciate your perspective.
Thank you, and I appreciate you tolerating my being able to share it with you today.
Thank you, Michael. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? At this point, are you all comfortable with recommending to the Board of County Commissioners that this document, as it stands right now with a few color changes, go forward to the Board of County Commissioners? This is just the land use element. Now, I did see something back on page 27. Jim, are you still there?
No, ma'am, but I can...
Ah, you went, okay.
Give me one second.
There's a typo, and I did it. All right. Now, the next page. Down under land availability, the sentence begins, "There are two striking needs." There's a word in it that needs to come out. There's "two striking needs B for," take out "B." Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's take a 10-minute break, or we'll be back here in 10 minutes, okay? Let's reconvene at 6:00. That's a nine-minute break, and we will look at the...
We going to vote on this one?
You want to vote? Yes, we probably need to vote on this. Do I have a recommendation, or this goes to the county commission?
I so move.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Joel is seconding, and he said it first, okay. Okay, any discussion, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Appreciate it, and we will look at housing element when we come back. To recreation and open spaces next, rather than...
Wait a minute.
Housing.
Okay.
Madam Chair, your microphone, please. Your microphone, please.
Thank you. We turned that off, didn't we? Okay. All right. Recreation and open spaces, there's not a whole lot of change in here. There are some updates to some graphs, or some tables. There wasn't any graphable data in here. So we've just updated the proper names of the county-owned parks and recreational areas. We've repeated the map. Jim, one thing I've noticed, and we're going to need to look at this throughout the entire document, is we're not uniform in our nomenclature with tables. For example, in this, it's a number, and in land use, it was a letter. So we need to be uniform in that nomenclature in tables and charts and stuff. Like I say, there's very little change in this. Updated about mud spring, changed some spellings and things like that. Simplified things, instead of saying "due to the fact," say "just because." And changed it from George's Lake to Lake George. We have both George's Lake and Lake George within the confines of Putnam County. And that's basically what we did here. We've talked about the open spaces, Rice Creek Swamp, Habitat for Swallowtail Kites, that's a unique habitat that's listed in here. We got into the analysis of level of service. Nothing changed with that. We just updated the population projections again and repeated that. So those are the things that have changed in recreation and open spaces from a perspective of document review and editing. Are there questions of the board or anything in this area, recreation, open spaces, agreement? You're in housing. We're in recreation.
It's in this color.
We're in green.
It's in green.
Because you went in order, and we changed the order.
She skipped it.
It was the third one, and it's not the second one. It's after housing. It's a small section after housing, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I had mine separated, but they're all together.
I was wondering what, I was sitting here looking at what you were talking about.
We got special ones, Jerry? You didn't get them?
I just felt left out there for some reason.
Okay. All right.
I'm in order now. Good thing we're ready to vote.
Any, no, any concerns or questions on this from the board? We do have one speaker, Karen Chadwick. Would you come forward, please, and speak?
Thank you for switching that timeline there. I just wanted to mention, it's called Lake Akawaha and Lake Rodman, and, right, it's two different names. As, well, it has to do with the economic impact also. There was some economists at the University of Florida that did some studies, and they used the data from the Greenway Manager, the counters that are in the road, and they found that during the last drawdown, there was an 81% increase in visitation during the drawdown, when the river is mostly within its banks. And the springs are available, there's so much more wildlife to see. And I do tours out on the area of riverways, I have my captain's license, and the fishing guides and I, at Kenwood, we would be there at sunrise. Not all of my people go out at sunrise, they get up a little bit later than the fishing guys, but we would go out at the same time, come back in about the same time, and then now with the, when the water came back up, the people that take my kind of tours don't, there's really not that much to see at all. And then you get a lot of blockages from the aquatic vegetation, and there's a lot of herbicides that are used repeatedly to keep the boat ramps and the river open. And I just hope that that can be looked at. Realistically, I'm out there a lot, and I think it would be an advantage. It is the state plan to restore the Akawaha River, the hydrology, reconnect the river.
Is it state-operated or the Corps of Engineers?
The state plan.
Okay.
DEP, FDEP.
Okay.
And I just wanted to get a word in on that. I don't know how it fits into this plan. I see it, it's called Lake Akawaha. It was a river, it should be a river, and it is an economic asset, more of one, when the river is within its banks. And it put Palatka on the map for tourism, back when that whole way was navigable, and people came from all over to fish there. It was a great fishing habitat before the dam was there. And I just wanted to mention that, however it fits in here, I don't know, but I think it's more of an asset as a river. There's a lot of problems with it, the way it is now. So, thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you. All righty. Anything we need to add, anything we need to delete, anything we need to change in recreation and open spaces? Unfortunately, we have no control as the county, as the planning commission, to do anything about the drawdown of water in the reservoir. But that's something the county commission could request, that those levels be kept lower, should that be their, that's their bailiwick, not ours. But I do appreciate your taking the time, and especially your time sitting through all of the future land use element, so...
I've got a question.
Is, I've got a question. Is, is it actually Lake Akawaha or is it Rodman Reservoir? I mean, do it, does it need, I think kind of what bothers her is the name.
The nomenclature.
That we've actually created something as a name that's really not, has not.
I don't think we have. What?
Give me one second, Madam Chair.
I think when the dam was installed back in the mid 60s. It's Rodman Dam. But I think it's just been called the Rodman Reservoir vernacularly. And I think it's possibly officially Lake Akawaha, but I'm not totally certain.
We call it Akawaha River.
It's at the, yeah, it's the dam, the dam.
That area, I don't know.
Yeah, it blocked the Akawaha. So.
No, I was just curious. I've never heard it called Lake Akawaha.
I've always known it to be the Akawaha River, not Lake Akawaha.
Yeah, I have.
Rodman Pool.
Yeah, it's the Rodman Pool. Rodman Reservoir.
That's what I've always.
Yeah, I never heard of it.
So let's go ahead and make that change in there, Jim. If we can, just do a search and replace anywhere it says Lake Akawaha. Change it to Rodman Reservoir.
Well, it's, it's Akawaha River, right, with Rodman?
Right.
That's, that's what I was.
It's, it's the Rodman Pool at the Akawaha River.
It's both up on top.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just how people called it.
Yeah.
It's the Akawaha River Boat Ramp.
All right, so it is, it isn't one place that says the Akwa, Akawaha River Boat Ramp?
That's fine.
And one place it is Lake Akawaha?
I would, I would take Lake Akawaha out and just let it be Rodman Reservoir. And take those parentheses out. Good. And up in the title, kill those parentheses. That's the fun part when using a laptop. Good job. Oh, yep, there it is again, Lake Akawaha.
Put here Akawaha River?
No, I, well.
Greenway is located adjacent to the Barge Canal, oh, and Rodman Reservoir.
Yep, and Rodman Reservoir. And then take out. I'm glad you're doing that because I couldn't have spelled it that well.
All right, I think it's in one more place.
One more place, no, that's, that's right there. That's right.
Okay, good. All right, I've made the changes.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Are you all ready to vote to send this element to the commission for their review and whatever?
I make the motion to approve sending this recreation open space element for approval to the commission.
And do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, Jerry got it in there first.
You gotta be quick, man.
You gotta be quick with this bunch. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, like sign. Chair voted aye. Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Chadwick, for being here.
You going red or orange?
We are going to this pale tan.
Number three, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Housing element.
I guess that's my orange.
Yeah, it looks kind of orangey.
Okay, housing.
I'm not going to comment on these colors. I just, that's not my bailiwick. All right, this element did undergo some changes. Some of which were just simple grammar. Population, this, this population growth trends is same one you've seen before. It's the exact same chart. And I re, I corrected the spelling of Pomona Park. And then you've got your population growth chart, growth chart on the next page, same one you've seen before. Then you've got your population projections. You've got your Bieber. I didn't, I didn't repeat this in a graph. Then we talk about the housing census. Jim, on the, under housing inventory.
What page, Madam Chair?
We're on page four. Sorry you've got ahead of me.
Okay.
Under the last line of paragraph one there, where it's talking about Bureau of Economic Business Research, Bieber, and the 2000 census. I think we need to say 2020 census projections.
2020?
Or the, 2000, 2000 census projections for the year 2020. But that wasn't. We can go back and use 2000 data. It's 2010 census.
So it's reading now, and the 2000 census projections for the year 2020?
It should be the 2010 census projections for the year 2020.
Okay.
All right. They're all projections. Now, we get into the age of the housing stock and that is more clearly shown on the table on page five and on the pie chart that accompanies that on page five. This is one of those areas where formatting made me want to throw things. You can see that the large majority of our, our housing stock was built in the 70s and the 80s. So relatively speaking, we have a fairly young housing stock. And those day, those numbers have been updated accordingly. And then on page five, we show the distribution or the ratio of single-family units or house, stick-built houses, detached, attached, to mobile homes or trailers.
Where's, what page you on?
We're on page six.
Oh.
I said five.
He said.
I, I lied.
It was 50/50.
It's getting late in the afternoon, so I might lie again.
The numbers are pathetic, aren't they?
Yeah, they are. They bother me badly. Now, but we will get into that with the land development code. Because we'll start talking about the age of these manufactured homes that are being brought into Putnam County.
Me too.
The interesting piece is over three-quarters of the homes in Putnam County are owned. Are occupied by the owner. I would have thought that would have been lower, but that's an interesting piece of data there.
Well, that, that kind of contradicts what we were talking about earlier.
Yeah, shoots it right out of the water.
Yeah, that, that totally contradicts what we were talking about earlier.
Well. I was supposed to use this. So out of 29,220, I think that number was 7,000 or something that was vacant on that other chart.
Right.
But if we go owners and renters, we only get 22,000, 23 maybe.
Mr. Teeples' data management and his calculation abilities are questionable. I'm not going to go there, Ken.
Well, I'll go there for you.
I know. I understand.
I mean.
Well, the other piece is there is, there are people who, and, and you, you'll see that later on, who. I may have just, no, I didn't. I'm not sure what numbers I used to capture that. I'll go back and check that table. But there are, there's a large portion of residences that have no rent. That are being occupied rent-free.
Yeah, that's, I, I had a question. Is that no cash rent? Is that what you're talking about?
That's what it says, and that's what.
I want to know what it means.
Well, that's his data.
I never heard that term.
I guess that means people are living there for free and it's, you know, speculative. Could it be family?
No, the only thing.
That'd be government subsidized homing, housing.
Totally subsidized?
Huh?
Would it be totally subsidized?
We don't.
Well, you could.
We don't.
I know there wouldn't be that many homes in Putnam County. We'd think that. The person that works on the farm gets a free house to live there and he's still getting wages.
Right. And I know a lot of family situations where, you know, a core family might have five homes and one person owns them all. You know, that's, that kind of situation. You don't own your home, you don't rent your home, you get there, live there rent-free.
Madam Chair, if I may, where did the data come from for owners and renters and the?
The University of Florida Schenburg Center.
And the pie chart there too? And table H five?
I do not know where that came from because that was Mr. Teeples' data.
But the, the new portion is the table that's there.
You talking about the 17,000 and the 5,000?
I don't know where that came from.
And that's new.
Let me double-check his numbers. I think I looked at just the age of the homeowner. I need to go back and double-check those numbers. I'll get that, I'll update that chart for you, Jim.
Well, if you go up.
Table or the pie chart? Because the pie chart doesn't have.
I'll update the table and the pie chart. I'm writing myself a note. I'll do that tonight.
Do you have that data now that we can look at?
No, I don't. I don't have my computer with me. But I will get this to you before I go to bed tonight.
The top half of the page says we got 29,220 places. The bottom half says we got less than 23,000.
All right, but that's by.
There's 7,000 vacant according to them, so that.
Yeah, put the vacancies in there. You might come close to it. I will double-check that data. And see if I can, I can verify that as well.
You have 7,000 vacant just that pool of water. Something's crazy somewhere.
I, I will, I will check his data.
If they're vacant, it's still, somebody owns them.
We don't have that many vacancies. I can tell you that right now.
I will, I will check and see what Schenburg says.
They own them.
I wonder if the vacancies they're talking about are people that have them for like weekend halls. You know, where they actually live in Jacksonville.
Okay, let's, let's do one at a time. I think Joel's got a good point. We have a lot of weekend residences around the lakes in, in Putnam County.
Well, and the river, I mean.
People come down just for a weekend or come out of the city for a weekend and stay here. So technically, they're vacant because they're not owner-occupied?
It's got to be where that number's coming from.
Could well be.
You can't, you can't count a house that I use occasionally as vacant.
Well, I think.
I don't know how census counts it. I'll go back to.
Somebody's counting it that way.
I'll check census, yeah.
I'm not saying it's right. I think that's where that number's got to be coming from because there are, there are a lot of people.
Oh, yeah.
That, that have weekend houses. I mean, I, I know of a bunch of them.
Yeah. I think we could all sit there and name a lot of people. I'll check these numbers, Jim. I will verify them and get them to you before I go to bed tonight. The rent ranges, table H six on the bottom of page seven. Again, that no, no cash rent, the 1,200 people with no cash rent.
$300 gets me too. Your first, your first group is 300 to 500 basically.
Right.
What do we have for $300 to $500 for rent in this county?
I think, I can, I can, I could believe that would happen.
I can too. Government subsidized housing. Some of the old mobile homes that are here. Some of the older houses that are in poor condition. So.
I don't know. I don't think so.
Well, I'll.
I think there's 100 in Crescent City housing like that. There's at least 100 people at least under $500, I guarantee you. We have a lot of government subsidized housing in Crescent City, I promise you.
Yes, we do.
Well. The gross monthly rent. You don't, it's not what the person pays, it's what the government allows for that unit.
And that's what it should be.
So that's, that, that throws that out of the water.
I will double-check all of these numbers and I will double-check the sources for all of these tables, none of which were included.
No cash rent. I, I'm interested to find out exactly what it is.
That's a mind boggler right there, but.
Yeah.
I mean, I got tenants that don't pay me, but they're supposed, they're supposed to be paying.
I will, I will double-check this and see what I can come up with. This is.
If you think about all those little lots that's out in the middle of nowhere that the lady was referring to earlier, I can believe a lot of those places probably, I mean, they're, they're shannies. They're probably $400.
Yeah.
Or less.
Well, the total number of all those renters on table H six and H five matches, 5431.
That's good.
I mean, it's consistent in that aspect.
It's amazing sometimes. All right, on page, are we up to page eight now? Again, we don't have any kind of reference on this. Percent of household income. Rent versus income. So gross rent is a percentage of household income is what this is. Yeah, it, it's in the text. And it's, it's now on the next one, so this is probably all coming from Schenburg. I'll double-check these dat, this data. Page nine, cost burden by income. So. It's your. Yeah, there's some interesting data there. Page 10, housing conditions. This is another one that just makes your head spin.
Yeah, I got, I got a lot of problems with this one too.
Well, again, this is University of Florida Schenburg Center data.
Well, I don't think we should be using their data if, if they're this far off. I mean, how many houses do you got? It says here we got almost 2,000 that don't have kitchens or plumbing.
Well, it could be, those could be duplicates. You could have of that 952 that are lacking complete plumbing, they may also lack a kitchen. I started saying chicken. I don't know where that came from. Start, they may also lack a kitchen, so these don't, you don't, they aren't.
Madam Chair, on that chart, we're looking at table H nine, housing conditions, correct? So lacking complete plumbing facilities, I only see 952.
Right.
I rounded it up to 1,000.
Oh, okay.
I rounded the kitchen up to 1,000 too where it says.
No, we, we're not rounding anything. We're, we're using actual numbers here.
I, I find it hard to believe that we have that many houses that don't have kitchens or plumbing.
And some of the mobile homes, I think, that are out in places like Hoot Owl Ridge and other subpar areas of the county, I think you're going to run into that. You're going to find a lot of people also are using travel trailers.
They'd still have plumbing though.
Well, it might not be hooked up to a septic system. Might not be hooked up to a, it might just be something they have to. There are situations where multiple lots share septic tanks too. So. This is a nightmare that we still have in this county and we're going to have to overcome in years.
It's, it's unbelievable.
Mm-hmm.
There's less people that share a room.
Your microphone, ma'am.
So there's less people who share a room than houses that don't have kitchens and-
And this may be where people are, are just, I guess, this could be a total of a thousand facilities, spread over the county. And single occupancy in many of them.
So that's a thousand out of the, well, I don't, it doesn't say they're renters, though, it says just-
Doesn't give you a total number.
It could be owner-occupied.
Yes, yes, it could be. I mean, we've seen situations, sadly, um... Where people have been living in storage units, or storage buildings.
Some of them are pretty nice.
I hear that.
I can testify to that, Madam Chair, we even have cases where people are using the restroom in a bucket.
Yep. It's, it's a sad reality. But demographically, when you look at, this is, this is the biggest demographic that's the sad one for Putnam County.
Do, do we have to have it?
Yeah, we do. Let's look at it this way.
We're trying to promote Putnam and not bring it down.
We've got great opportunity here, Joel.
I think you'll find that in almost any county in Florida.
It's everywhere, it's everywhere. And this even, is this really severely in your large urban areas? You run into this. In inner cities, it's, it's just unbelievable.
I'd like to see charts for inner cities, I, I just-
I'll, I'll see what I can pull, pull for you, I'll let you look at it.
I'd like to see St. John's County, or any, any neighboring county that we have.
You gotta remember, St. John's County has a higher cost of living than the state average.
Alright, let's go to Volusia, is that, is that one?
Volusia, Duval.
Well, everybody's got higher than Putnam, we can't, we don't, there is none-
Parts of Alachua will be miserable. And you've got a large migrant area in, in Alachua County. And you gotta remember, Putnam County also has... A very large Hispanic area. And I've not been down there, but I know that that's problems there. So...
I mean, you know, all, all sections of Putnam have their problems.
Yes, now, page thirteen, we've got a lot of white space because I could not make the formatting work.
Don't skip the bottom of ten. You got Palatka Housing Authority.
Yes, cuz Palatka Housing Authority operates the county housing.
Palatka Housing Authority operates the county housing?
They operate, yes, Section Eight for the county.
Oh, section-
Not just, yes.
In the county, yeah.
Okay.
The county and the city of Palatka.
Yeah, correct.
And they also operate the Crescent City, um, public housing.
Yeah, they have public housing and they have Section Eight.
Right.
Now, what we've got here, it says... There's four-hundred-and-twenty-one units and seven conventional public housing complexes, that's in Palatka. Are, is anybody in here aware that we're getting ready to tear down half of them?
Well, that is not current data.
It's not?
That's probably true, and there's nothing we can change this, because we have to base it on what's officially out there.
But a lot of those are gonna be torn down, it'll be rebuilt, aren't they? That's my understanding.
They're gonna be replaced.
Replaced. Supposedly.
I like that word.
What, supposedly? Or replaced?
You remember when we tore down the high-rise?
Oh, yeah.
And we replaced all them? Now, wait a minute, we forgot to do that part of the replacement.
I gave more people to rent your property.
Sweetheart, I don't, I don't have any vacancies.
Not very many people do right now.
I have, I have plenty of people not paying, but no vacancies.
That's a reality in this world today.
Yes, it is.
Alright, page thirteen, I, I apologize for all the vacant space, we're gonna try to make that format better. And we'll format this table on page fourteen a little bit better, this was something he had had turned landscape, and I've reformatted it, and, um, I just did-
I got some questions on twelve, if you, if you're gonna fill me in order.
Alright. Thirteen, fourteen comes out, I'm sorry. You're on twelve, what do you have?
Mobile home, manufactured homes. It says there are no, there's currently no special areas designated for mobile manufactured home subdivisions in the county.
That's right, there are no subdivisions that are officially platted for manufactured homes.
Are you sure about that?
Do you have data that shows otherwise?
I got a realtor sitting beside you over there, is Palm Shores got any houses in it? Unit twenty-three I L A? Yeah, there's no house, it's all mobile homes.
It may not be, but the, the, it may, you know, it's R-two zoning, which is residential.
Yeah, and there's no, no houses neither.
Well, but it's not set up as a subdivision, a, an officially designated subdivision.
It's not a P U D.
Right, it's not a platted subdivision.
It is a platted subdivision.
But it's residential.
It would be R M H, Madam Chair, is what we'd be looking for.
It would be R M H if it were mobile homes.
That would be a mobile home park.
Right. But I don't think we have any specific subdivisions.
What, what is Alhambra? Is that? Well, that's, yeah, I know, you, you can't have it both ways, it's either a mobile home park, or it's a subdivision that only has mobile homes. Now, Alhambra is a mobile home park. And there's nothing in it except mobile homes.
Well, there are a lot of those throughout the county, a lot of places that, that are set up that way, but are they actually platted as subdivisions?
Your R M H... I don't know if it's platted as a subdivision, but in Alhambra, which is not Alhambra anymore, it's St. John's something. It is a mobile home park.
Mm-hmm.
For mobile homes, period.
That's, that's the one-
Behind the old Kmart, or Walmart, or whatever it was.
That's, that's the one that just came the other day and got a P U D. That wasn't, that wasn't for mobile homes, was it? I think it was for manufactured homes, it wasn't-
Yeah, the one, the one we did down in Satsuma.
Yeah, the one in Satsuma.
Yeah, we got 'em there, you got 'em, you go out twenty, you got Villa Farms, what's Villa Farms?
Villa Farms is a P U D.
Well, you wanna call the horse a brown horse, or a white horse, or a black horse, Villa Farms is a place that's only for mobile homes. The one that he's talking about, we just did last, a month or two ago, is in Satsuma. And there's two of them down there, there's one that-
Right, there are three of them, there are two, three of them there.
That came before us, and then across the street, on the other side of the road, is the same thing as what Villa Farms is.
Madam Chair, if I may, as a suggestion, if you were to strike that last sentence, there are currently no specifically designated, if, if you strike that, it doesn't change the meaning-
And I had a note on that, so just go ahead and take it out. It's not worth the, the time we're spending on it. Okay.
Alright, let me ask another question.
Are you still on page ten?
Yes, dear.
Twelve.
Twelve. The increasing ratio of lower-cost homestead exempt-
Where are you?
The next paragraph. Right after it's, right after you're striking out.
Okay.
The stuff. "Mobile homes to higher-cost conventional housing creating a proportionally dwindling housing tax base." "Therefore, the county should review the current regulations for mobile manufactured homes to require..." "What is reasonable ownership standards?"
Responsible ownership standards, I think that's something that'll come in the Land Development Code, maintenance, um, upkeep. Basic building systems. Being, you know, up to code.
I think we probably do that, don't we?
I seriously doubt it.
You doubt it?
I know our county allows any mobile home, in other words, what happens, they wear 'em out in all the surrounding counties? And Putnam County's the only one that'll take the war-out ones. The rest of the counties, they won't let 'em come out, they won't let 'em, if they were built, I think it's at ninety-something, ninety, it might even be two thousand, they can't-
Ours is nineteen seventy-six.
Bring them into that county, if they're already there, they can keep 'em, but whenever they replace 'em, they can't replace 'em with another, with a, with a war-out one.
It has to be within-
It has to be within a certain year limit, just like a vehicle.
Anyone that we bring in, anyone that we bring in here has to be inspected by county staff before it can be-
I'll leave that up to Mr.-
Well, you can leave it up to him, but isn't that correct?
Madam Chair, that any person willing, or wanting to place a home in Putnam County, they, unincorporated, even some of the municipalities, they have to apply. And then, yes, they will go through to ensure that that home meets the Florida Building Code, uh, we look at setback standards and, and ensuring the zoning district is, uh, applicable. And then, yes, an inspector will go out and review that parcel. I believe we're at nineteen seventy-six in the year of homes that we will allow to come into this county, which is my understanding, is much lower than every other county around us.
Sure.
That's correct.
And I think the thing that we're having to fight is we've got so many subpar mobile homes that are in Putnam County, that have been placed here before those regulations went into effect. And we've got people that will pull a county, a, a, a mobile home in in the dark of night and squat it on their land, and put a gate on the road, too. Uh, so they can have their own privacy and do what they wanna do.
Ms. Patrino, um, I believe that they, that these, these seventy-six model mobile homes, they do not meet Florida Building Code. The current building code, they would know, they would never meet the Florida-
There's a checklist that we have-
Madam Chair, it's my understanding that, uh, at that age is where the Florida Building Code does recognize, I had a conversation with the building official the other day, and that's a number that he threw out to me. And about that area, and I guess everything would be different, you'd have to be on a case-by-case, I would assume, but again, that's about the year that we're looking at. Bottom line is whether it's built in nineteen seventy-six or nineteen eighty, uh, or later, if it doesn't meet the Florida Building Code, we will not allow it to come into Putnam County. But there are many cases where people bring their own homes here, do not ask for permitting.
That's right.
And place their homes in violation of not only the building code, but of, of our land development code.
And the way we get rid of those is with the property appraiser's office, we visit every property once every three years. And when they visit a property that is, did not have that permit pulled on it, then it's removed.
Well, in the ideal world, that would happen, but when you have short staff, that's probably difficult.
You can do it with Google Maps, though.
Yeah, you can do it with a Google Maps.
No, that, that happens every day here.
I think that's a good thing that that happens, because we've, we've got a lot of substandard of housing, and I think probably a number of those deficient residences fall into that category.
Probably.
So, uh, let's just take that sentence out that we talked about earlier, but-
Did.
I, I think by saying the county should review, rather than will, um, current regulations, and that's the Land Development Code, or the current regulations, so that we will be getting to. Anything else? Ken?
Wait, you indicate that our tax base is going down.
Our residential tax base, because you don't pay taxes, property taxes on a mobile home.
Pay what?
A mobile home is taxed differently than a regular residence.
No, that's a false statement.
Basically, the value is usually under the homestead exemption.
Right.
For the older ones, so that people end up not having to pay taxes.
Now, it's my understanding that a mobile home goes less and less value the older it gets.
Right.
Where a home gets more and more valuable the older it gets, to a certain extent, so, um... I guess it's still, don't they have to have a tag or some-
Yeah, it's the decal they have to have.
They don't have to have a tag?
Yeah, they have to have a decal.
You can have an RP sticker.
Yeah.
And that's your decal, that means it's real property, it's taxed just like your house.
Or-
Or you wanna buy mobile tags like on an automobile tag.
Right.
Okay? Florida law says, if you own this piece of property, and you own the mobile home on that property, it will be taxed as real property. You cannot buy the little sticker. You can buy the little sticker if you go to Alhambra Mobile Home Park, cuz you don't own the land there. And you can buy the sticker, it's not can, you're mandated to buy the sticker there.
But a lot of people don't, and there was just a full, big piece in the paper yesterday, I believe, about the tangible property taxes that are overdue.
Tangible property taxes is not what we're talking about.
Okay, it was, it was something from the tax collector's office, talking about how they needed to get these things paid for, because if they hadn't paid for it by January first, they're in arrears.
Correct.
So, but are you disputing the statement that the increasing ratio of lower-cost homestead-exempted mobile homes to higher-cost conventional housing is creating a proportionally dwindling housing tax base? Are you disputing that statement?
What I'm saying, our tax base has gone up the last three years.
And that's based on appraisals.
Correct, that's the only thing it's based on. Property appraiser is, his job is to go out and assess, every, every one of these chairs out here is a house, or they're just a property.
Alright.
They have to go out and they, they assess that, each one of them.
Alright, let's go back to the document, Ken. Do you dispute that, does anyone else dispute that statement?
I do not.
I think you've got, you're over, overvoted here, Ken.
I usually am.
But, uh, so everybody's cool with leaving that statement, we're not gonna discuss this anymore. Let's move on. Cuz we still have to get to economic development. Alright, anything on page thirteen? One time, page fourteen has been deleted.
When are we gonna get to demos?
We're going page by page.
Okay.
Page fifteen. Page fifteen has the housing analysis.
Ah, there you go.
And I've got to reformat that one a little bit, I've gotta go through this whole one again, this is the one I did Sunday night, and, um...
You're only looking, what page are you on, I'm sorry, again?
Uh, page fifteen.
Fifteen.
Alright, what are you looking at on here, Ken?
Fifteen and not, and thirteen sorta go together, number seven?
I thought we finished thirteen, let's go back to thirteen.
Well, your, your, your chart goes with-
Right.
Goes with the-
Correct.
On page thirteen.
Okay.
Alright, and it says... Let me see. Housing construction activity for the county. According to county staff. Six-hundred-and-eighty-three single-family homes were constructed, and eight-hundred-and-forty-four mobile homes were put in place. That's in a ten-year period?
That's in the period from two thousand nine through two thousand twenty.
Eleven-year period? We got a problem there, or is it? Well- Well...
What's your question?
No question.
Okay, any questions on that table? Somebody mentioned demolitions?
Me. Are demolitions?
What about it?
I mean, we were, you were, somewhere in your verbiage, you had, we're tearing houses down and everything, but a demo permit for every mobile home that is replaced, there's a demo permit pulled.
And that, this is based on the permitting activity?
Okay.
And I need to put the source on that.
So, Madam Chair, you're going to take care of these and send this document back to me?
It's getting more and more that I'm going to be doing, but yeah.
You did it too late.
I thought it was going to be simple.
You did it too late at night, it looks like.
No, I did it when I was just getting back on my feet from being sick. Okay.
Well, your chart for your mobile home, new mobile homes total.
Which page are you on, Mr.?
On page fifteen.
Chart's on fifteen.
Okay.
You've got a hundred and seventy-four.
For two thousand twenty.
Madam Chair, so the record reflects this data came from the permitting department and planning development services. And this was taken from our statistics that we compile on a monthly and yearly basis.
Yes.
I have no questions.
All right. Anybody else have any questions on this? Okay.
So, I have a question. Since we need, um, support by this commission for this element, we're going to need, um, we're going to need direction saying if, if a few things are going to be changed, that would be one thing, but we will not be able to meet again as a board before the twenty-fifth to discuss...
All right, let's do this. We've done this before. When I get this to you tomorrow, you send it out to everybody and you all have got twenty-four hours to say yea or nay about it. Does that, does that work, Mr. Perry?
Yes, ma'am, that'd be fine.
Okay, so this will be sent out, the corrected version will be sent out to you tomorrow. There may be a few formatting issues still in it because of, formatting was a bear on this one. Formatting was a bear on all of them. And you've got twenty-four hours to say you, you approve of it or you don't. And it's a simple up or down vote.
And that would be coming back to...
Coming back to Mr. Troyano. Or to Jenny, one of the two. Can't come back to me.
Jenny, how would you like that? Would you like it to you? Please.
She sends it and we'll get it back to her, reply back to her.
Yep, send it to Jenny.
Do not reply all. It would be just reply directly to Jenny.
Right.
So nobody else sees.
Reply email, yes or no?
Right.
Approve it or not?
And then Jenny, if you would just send a tally of the votes out to everybody.
So, so Plan B, if there is an objection to it, there's going to have to be a resubmittle of the document?
My suggestion is we look at a strict up or down vote. We've already gone through each, each area that people had concerns about. We're going to make the changes. We're going to send it back out. It's not up for debate again. It's just up for an up or down vote, as though we were taking that vote right now.
And what would make your, what would make the vote legal? Five, what do you need? Three, three votes?
You need five votes.
So three would be yes and two could be a no, that would approve it?
That would be a quorum.
That's fine.
Madam Chair, if I may, I, I have, I'm having some difficulty with that respectfully because I, I think we, you would have to take a vote now on whether you would wish to transmit this to the VOCC as an appro, with a recommended approval, subject to the changes discussed. We can't field votes through email. That's, that's just not something that I think is in line with the statute. Mr. Perry?
Mr. Perry, work that out.
Ma'am, I'll be happy to review the statute. From what the board was discussing, what the chairperson was discussing, I didn't see a problem with it, but I'll be happy to talk to Gabriel about it. And if there is something, I mean, if you give me the, we can look at it right now.
Madam Chair, we should take a recess for a moment for that to take place then.
Let's, let's just take a brief recess, yes. I'll let you guys work on that and we're going to sit here and relax.
We're going to sit here and relax. So basically, we have verified the data we were looking at. The rent to own ratio is correct. And all I am going to do is check the formatting and get the sources listed on all of these documents, all of these tables where they weren't listed. I will find a source for them and do a little bit of formatting with color. And that's about, that's all I'm going to be doing. We have made all of the context changes that need to be made. Are you ready to vote on the housing element?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion that we recommend this to the Board of County Commissioners?
I move approval of the housing element based on the things that you just identified you will be doing.
No, I'll second that.
That's not good enough.
Would you please make that a proper motion for us, Jenny, when you type it up? We are moving to recommend the data and analysis for the housing element to the Board of County Commissioners. And all I'm going to be doing is curting it up. Okay.
Yes, we're making a motion that you're going to change the format.
Right, I'm not changing any content.
You're not changing any of the data, and you're going to identify the data that's in there.
Right, I'm going to identify the data sources. I'm going to do some formatting changes. And if I can't get them done, we're sending them back to Jacksonville and giving him a two-hour deadline.
I move what Joel just said.
Yeah, whatever, we're doing it.
Ken, just for a point of clarification before.
Yes, ma'am, what page?
Okay, so the only data I don't see that is, that doesn't have an identification of where it came from is the last one on page 15.
Well, there's.
That we said came from, the source was the Planning and Development Services Permitting Department.
There's, there are a couple others, I'm sorry to say.
Yes, on page four is another.
Yeah. It's not.
Just a couple places.
It's not page four, it's table four, I believe.
I'm sorry, page six.
So, yeah.
You mean the one at the bottom?
Table five and table four, neither one of those have data.
Table four says.
Table five is Schimberg, right?
University of Florida Schimberg Center.
Yeah, but it's just not at the bottom of it.
The only one that doesn't match is the one that doesn't add up to 29,000.
We're not going to worry about that tonight, Mr. Schwing.
But that's the one that hasn't, is not referenced by anybody.
We've got it. All right. All those, we have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? All those in favor to recommend this, say yes.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, hang on to your hats. We're going into economic development, and that's a big one.
One second, madam chair, it's going to take me a minute to get back to where I was.
Glad to let you get there. We did.
It shouldn't take very long.
Actually.
Madam Chair, who crossed a lot of this out in this element?
Mr. Teepel. It came to us that way. And we need to get the pagination right on this. It's in the header and foot, it's in the footer. Jim, the pagination is showing as I.
Oh, hang on one second, please, ma'am. Not there yet. So you are on the last, this is number nine. This is economic development.
Yep.
Okay, I am on page one of this.
All right, keep going way, keep going. Go through the first eight pages. That's what he crossed out.
Again, this is, the reason, Madam Chair, was that he is now using a different study. He wasn't using the 2014-15 plan that the chamber and others utilize. This is the newest strategic plan from the chamber.
Right, that's the appendix is the new strategic plan.
Okay. And so we're going to page nine?
Well, page 10.
10, okay.
And which calls itself II. It's the page that starts economic development introduction. Down in the footer there, Jim, he's got the pagination as an I, and it should be ED.
I'm sorry, oh, I see. Let me just fix that real quick.
If you can get into the footer and do that.
I did. Let's see if it will allow me to change that in the entire document.
Probably not.
ED three, ED four.
Yep, got it.
It did, yes, ma'am.
Good.
All right. We are, we're on page I three, and we'll continue calling it that. Jim's going to just have to change that to ED in his mind.
I did already.
Okay, he's got it on his document there. All right, this is where I'm going to change some colors. I spent a good half hour trying to color match this, and I never could get it done. So I will get these back. I'm just going to use the orange and blue consistently throughout for two colors. Orange, blue, and yellow for three colors, and use the brighter colors. So we were looking at the regional population trends, and we've seen this before. Same charts, just different colors. And then on to I five. I six is the population trends again, and I've made some edits there, and I will change that pink. And and then moving on, we see the same chart again, and it's a little bit better formatted on the housing construction activity. We need to put the source on that, Jim.
On this one, we're on.
Page seven.
Page seven.
Okay, give me one second. I think I can do that right now while we're here, while you're discussing.
If you go to the end of, just 236 and hit tab, you should get a new line. Oh, that's okay, do that.
I don't even have a page seven. I have seven.
I seven.
I go from six to eight.
Well.
Yeah. Let me see what seven looks like.
I have an extra year out.
That's all right, that's the same as what we had earlier.
All right.
Give me one second.
I seven, I eight is.
I have to fix something real quick.
Okay.
Ah, there's seven. It's after 10.
Just have to add a ruler so I can fix something real quick.
Okay. The reason I repeated or copied and pasted that chart was to get it in a portrait orientation rather than a landscape orientation. It's easier when you're doing a document to read through, straight through in one orientation. So that sideways one is just repeated on page seven.
Okay, so now I just need to fix this. I'm putting the source here of the data.
Okay, good.
No, not either. I did?
Thank you.
So source, Putnam County Planning and Development Services.
Cool. Very good. All right. Page eight is deleted, so page nine. Page nine just has that one little chart at the bottom. I made a note there because he made the comment that our average daily attendance had gone down in the beginning of 2021, or 2020. And I made the note there because it's known information, the school board has acknowledged that, and of course, they were in a modified format when they first went back to school, and there were some kids on homeschooling. So they were not a part of the average daily attendance counts. So that explains some of that drop in attend, drop in student population. So households and household sizes.
What page, please?
On page 10.
Got it, I'm here.
The number of households has gone up, and the average size of the household has gone down in Putnam County.
That would match the age thing, being sixty-five and older.
Page 11, we've got the chart in there on the workforce. And interestingly, our workforce is high. And it's continued to rise. So.
Good thing.
And that's percentage of population there. Page 12 discusses the firms by industry category. And moving to the NAICS system, classification system. And we have the industry types. And the on page 13, we have the changes from 1998 to 2000 to 2017. And they, there is no more current data than that with the U.S. Census Bureau. We're not going to push that on it. This is the number of firms. Moving on to 14, it's discussion of the employment by industry category. And I've moved that to discussion. But this is the employees by the industry type. So the number of total employees has dropped by 4% overall in Putnam County. But if you look at some of the areas where we've seen some increases and some decreases. But this again goes through 2017. Page 16 talks about personal income. And that is per capita personal income. I took out the total personal income. And then the Consumer Price Index, showing the cost of living in the counties that are in the Northeast Florida Regional Council area. Putnam County has the lowest cost of living of all of those counties. And interestingly, yep, Flagler, yeah, next to Flagler. Baker's coming up there. We're, Baker and Putnam County run a close race in some areas. But St. John's County is over the state average in cost of living by 0.1%. And then, let's see what else we have. There's not a whole lot. And the appendix is the 2021 Chamber of Commerce strategic plan.
Okay.
And that's it. All right.
So other than formatting, will be no other changes to this?
You got it.
I'll send you this document then.
I'll get the formatting to you sometime tomorrow, Jim. And so you can get this to the VOCC by Friday. All right, anything else? Yep, I'll take a motion.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the economic development element to with the formatting, for the data and analysis. With the formatting changes, nothing changing.
No, no content.
No content changes. To the commission.
Right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Shall we? Very emphatically about that. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 We have one more item of business, and we have, is there any new business, by the way? Just tell you, this will be taken to the Board of County Commissioners for Transmittal Hearing Number Two on Tuesday, May 25th at 9:00 a.m. or time thereafter, whenever they get around to it. So, don't know where this will fall on their agenda. We do have the minutes from the previous meeting of April 14th. Are there any additions, corrections, deletions, or whatevers?
Will we approve the minutes as presented?
Okay, Tom has a move for approval. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Joel has seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Chair votes aye, no opposed. Thank you, I know it's been a bit of a marathon tonight. And Tom, I believe that's your lovely wife sitting out there waiting on you. We appreciate your patience. Wasn't it, though, just riveting?
My wife would have said you could hitchhike home.
I'm glad she waited.
Yeah, I ain't waiting.
Tom, if she was to leave you here.